Okay.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Reddington Shores Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 28th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
All right, Sheri, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Blackburn.
Here.
Commissioner Crowe.
Here.
Commissioner Kryeski.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yep.
And Mayor Henderson.
I am here. Okay, under Old Business, the first item is the storm water management.
Yes, and we were supposed to have a guest with us, which was supposed to also be able to pop up a PowerPoint. Todd, who's with Seminole Septic, I don't know if he's joined us yet.
I'm looking. I don't see him anywhere, even on the attendee list.
Well, I know he had touched base with you.
Wait a minute, what's his last name? There's a T. Watson.
Watson.
That's him?
That's it.
Okay, he's an attendee. Sheri, can you please promote him?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, because I thought they, he had spoken with either Mary and or Sheri.
He's on now.
Hey, there he is. Tim, you got to unmute yourself. Or I guess Sheri, you have to unmute him?
No, he has to. He did it.
Yeah, we're here, you guys. Sorry about that.
There we go.
We're here, ready to go, and thank you very much.
Wow, you even, you combed your hair.
I did. I actually just got done from the, from the, I went out and got it all perm'd and I hope you guys can see, you know, I look, you know, ready.
So let me set the background here. As you all know, earlier in the month, we had our commissioner meeting. And Todd and the boys had been out doing some work in, actually, Cindy's district on Long Point and First. And I brought back some of the remnants of what they found. And what I thought it would be helpful for is to at least spend a few minutes because we are going to incur some additional expenses going forward. And probably history doesn't dictate what type of, I guess this would technically probably be operating expenses. I don't know, Chris, or how we classify it, but a lot of the work in company, and I guess really I should say Kirby, since you're the chairman, and the rest of the, by the way, welcome to all the new Financial Advisory Group members. So I don't know how we'd classify it, but we are definitely going to be spending more, because what I'd like to do is going forward, have more of a regimented, routine maintenance program associated with these outfalls and the CDS units and not get in the situation that we found ourselves in. Everywhere we kind of popped the lid, it was another new adventure for us. And I don't want to steal any of Todd's and company's thunder, but what I thought it would be helpful, since we are going to be budgeting these items, and the numbers are going to probably be exponentially a little bit higher than they've happened in the past. So I thought it'd be appropriate for him to spend a little time and kind of give us a little update, including what he's found and his team has found in District Four over the last couple of days. So Todd, it's all yours.
Yeah, so first off, I just want to say thanks because, you know what, I think that sometimes people are a little bit surprised that, you know, when we're out at various places doing work, you know, what we find or what we encounter and things like that, you know, everybody's seen that little placard, you know, raining down the drain, but, you know, really, the people in the field, what is it that we come across? What is it that we see? So I put together something. Hopefully, you guys will find it interesting. And without any further ado, let me just get to my, my PowerPoint and we'll go right through it. Oh, I guess we need permission to share the screen.
Just a moment. Okay, that should have done it. You should see that share screen.
In green.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
All right.
Cool.
All right, thank you. So, you know, what is it you expect to find when we clean out the storm pipe, right? And like I was saying, that the answer might surprise you. I mean, some of the things that you would expect us to find are the obvious, you know, the sand, mud, leaves, debris, oyster shells and barnacles, right? But what else do we find? Definitely not this. That's my weak attempt at humor. Hope you guys. So, okay, one of the things that you probably don't expect to see is construction debris, stucco, concrete. Also failures, collapsed pipes, roots, other major issues, and a reduction in pipeside. Come across all of these things. And they all affect the performance of the storm system one way or another. So what I've done is I've basically just kind of captured a bunch of pictures that kind of will illustrate, you know, what it is we come across. So here, I've got a picture of what grout looks like in a storm pipe. All too often, we see people doing construction work and then they're rinsing out everything, their wheelbarrows, their stucco, their everything right into the storm drain. But it sets up like concrete and it's very difficult to get out of the pipe. Here's a picture, a great picture of concrete. I mean, look at that pipe. I mean, you know, that thing's at least 75% closed now. So when you see these people on the side of the road and it kind of warrants some attention, you know, as to how they're cleaning up their, their job site at the, at the, at the end of the day. When people are out on the work, I mean, I'm sorry, out on the job and they're putting in, you know, either power lines or fiber optic cables or things like that, it is not uncommon at all for us to find directional boring projects gone bad. This is a perfect example of where somebody just bored right through the side of a pipe. It happens all the time. Roots, another common culprit that we come across. You know, these roots, they get inside the joints and they just grow. We've seen it where the entire pipe is completely choked off for several feet at a clip. And although this isn't on your beach, it's just a good illustration of what a collapsed line looks like. This is a corrugated metal pipe, but the top of the pipe is caved in. And you could see that if you were to have anything of substance go down this pipe, it's going to be easily caught on that pipe, I mean, on that, on that failure. And then it just creates a tremendous backup that follows. So what to expect when we clean your pipe? This is kind of a good representation of what it basically looks like. That's pretty much the same truck that we use. It's just a big tractor truck. That orange reel on the front of the truck, it's a jet hose, and basically it just sprays a cone of water. So if you thought about an opened up umbrella of water pressure, that it goes into the pipe and then as the operator sends it out and then brings it back, that big snorkel, if you will, that's going in the storm drain, we're sucking up everything as we're bringing it back to us. This is a picture of a cutting tool similar to what we use. We send that machine down the pipe and then you can see on this one that the front of it just rotates and it's got these saw blades in the front of it. Ours is a little bit different, but it's basically the same thing, but it'll cut through, you know, the material depending on what it is. And do a really good job and illustrate that. Here's a picture of some oyster shells that have, you know, grown inside of the pipe. And then once we're done running that cutter through it and we clean it, and this is the end result. So it opens it right back up. Now it will grow again. And I want to apologize, I don't have a picture or that I could find for you guys of what it looks like when a pipe is reduced. Sometimes another culprit is that we find at the mouth of a pipe that the opening might be 15, 16, 18 inches, and then where it dumps out, it's reduced by half. So anytime you try to shove, you know, a 16-inch pipe and then choke it off to an eight-inch pipe and that water is just, it's hydraulically overloaded and definitely causes a backup. So I wish I would have had a good picture to show that to you guys, but it's kind of hard on the PowerPoint. But at this point, I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, entertain, welcome any questions that anybody may or might not have.
I have a question for you, Todd. I know you did First Street and Long Point for me. Is there, will I be able to get a report that kind of tells me how many storm drains are still obstructed? Or were there any outflows that we missed because of high tide? Just some, what percent of success you had and where the outfalls are narrower than the, than the, I guess, intake would be? Is that? Will I be able to get that? I would like to know, you know, kind of what the results were, so I can share.
Absolutely, yeah. You know what? So Rich does a wonderful job. Typically, at the end of a project, what he'll do is he'll basically sit down and just use Google Earth. And he makes a pretty good overall of what we've cleaned. And then we also have a pipe run report that goes hand in hand with the Google map and all of the videos that we've taken. But you will absolutely get that upon, you know, upon completion.
Upon what was completed, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Once, once we're done with the project, right now, all the video files and everything are still pretty much on the truck. But once we complete the project, and if you'd like it, I can get it to you sooner than later. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
If it's not a problem, I guess, because since First Street and Long Point are done, if it's not a problem, I would love to have it, but, you know.
Yeah, you know what? I'll see Rich first thing in the morning tomorrow, and I'm sure I could have something to you by, you know, early part of next week, if that's okay.
That would be wonderful. Yes.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Yeah, so Cindy, just so we're clear though, First and Long Point were done. So there's nothing left on those streets. There's Wall, Wall Circle, Wall Terrace, and then 170-some street or whatever up on the other side. And there might be maybe another one or two manholes, or I should say sewer, stormwater grates that haven't been opened up that feed into the outfalls that are across the street. But for all intensive purposes, where we were concerned and where you and I had spoken when we were out in the field there, they're done.
Right, I thought, I thought one outfall, I thought Brad had told me the one outfall was high tide, so they weren't able to do one outfall. And then I also thought that y'all had a piece of equipment that broke in a storm drain on, at the end of First, like at the First and Wall, that that, I thought maybe that drain might still be obstructed.
My recollection, go ahead, Todd.
Oh, no, please, please go, go ahead, go ahead.
No, my recollection is that the, the, where First met Wall, that was completed.
Okay, so all the drains, there is no residue in any of the, of the storm drains. Those were all completely cleaned out?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, but there could have been one that might have we missed, but I know for a fact, Long Point is definitely 100% done.
Okay.
And First, there might have been one out of the, I don't know, 10 or whatever it was, or 15 it was in total. But Todd will get you that information, but.
That's, that's great. Thank you.
And.
Went back the next day. There was, there was some equipment problem and then they went back the next day.
Yep, yep. So we're going to go back, by the way, Cindy, because when I was out there, there was a couple that was walking their dog. And apparently he is some type of engineer and he lived over on, I want to say, Wall Terrace. What's the street that runs perpendicular to where Hernandez's house is? You know what I'm talking about?
Perfect. Well, that would be Wall Street. He's, he's on Wall Circle. Hernandez's house is on Circle. And then there's Wall Street, the first one you go down.
Right, no, so it's keep, keep going around the bend there. So when you get to his house, Hernandez.
Wall Terrace?
Yeah, it's either Wall Terrace or Wall Circle back in there. Is that what, yeah. So back in there, originally, when he mentioned it to me, he, he referenced Hernandez's house. And then Brad and I, a couple of days later, we're doing some inspections around just to find various things, because we found in a couple of situations that the maps that we have that were done by the engineers, that, not a lot, but there were a few that weren't marked. The actual storm grades were not marked, stormwater grates were not marked on the maps. So we were going through that. And then Mr. Hernandez came out and told me that he had spoken with the gentleman, because I shared that with Mr. Hernandez. And he said he, he went back to the gentleman and it was back in there. So we're going to go back in, into that area once we're done with District Four. And we're pretty close to ending that too, by the way. We're done for this week. I don't have a status report yet as of end of day where we are in District Four. But we will definitely get back. But my, my recollection of that, when I had shared with you and I think I also shared with the rest of the commission, I know I gave also a copy to Jenny, because there were addition, in addition to a pumpkin key, I got a report from Mary, which listed all of the homes that reported into Town Hall. Again, that's not necessarily everybody that was impacted. But there was over 150-some or 160 homes that were impacted by ETA. And 80% or 85% of those, or maybe more, were in District Four, but there were some in your district. Every, every house that was listed in District Two was either on Wall, I mean, excuse me, on.
I only had like three.
Yeah, but I'm saying to you, those houses, I made sure when I looked at that list, I went back to make sure that we got those houses or where they were being fed, that that was taken care of.
But, okay, yeah. So are, are you going to do all of Wall, all the walls?
We'll go back there. Yep, yep. We'll start back into, go back to District Two after we're done. Yep. Only Mother Nature will prevent us from getting that done.
Jenny might need some.
Yes. She got four or five.
Yeah, he's got my list of, and it was just ones that, yeah, he got, he got my list of the ones that were flooded both before and, and because of ADA. And I just want to say, I just want to say, I really do appreciate Commissioner Kryeski for keeping me informed of, you know, when they were going to be working and when they needed one of the public works guys. And it made it easier to coordinate, to make sure that the beach got rigged and everything still got done. And we were still available with the Bobcat to do the, the storm drains. Appreciate that.
Jenny, thank you. But I would also be remiss if I didn't say, if it wasn't for your flexibility and being able to work with us, that we wouldn't have got this done without your team's help. So thank you.
I have a question for Todd.
Sure.
So you said, construction, people rinsing their stuff off, the tile people with the grout and the cement and whatnot, causes problems. What would you like us to tell our contractors to do? How do you deal with that debris?
You know, I, I, I don't have the, the, the answer for that, to be honest with you. I'm not sure what guidelines construction crews are supposed to follow.
Do you have any suggestions at all? I mean, but they can't take this wet concrete or grout or whatever and put it into their vehicle and take it away. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what to tell them, because it is a huge problem.
You know, what I would suggest, and this is really like very impromptu, but, you know, they, they, a lot of times on new construction, they're required to put a merifite wrap around the existing storm grate, so that way these kinds of things don't happen. And it wouldn't be out of the question to just ask these contractors to just, I mean, go to United Rental or someplace like that where they sell a merifite wrap, Home Depot, and, and just place it over the storm grate. I mean, it would significantly reduce the amount of particulates that go into the drain. And I think it could be a very cheap and viable option and a very effective way of dealing with it. It's certainly, it's certainly, it's certainly worth asking if they'd be willing to participate.
Well, Commissioner Crowe, you could make that a requirement, kind of.
Well, we already, I should tell you all what we.
They have silt fence, we know, but.
We have implemented since the, the, the Wall Street and the, the, not the Wall, the Long Point and First Street, we added to our permits when we issued new bills and things that they do the silt fence and they also have the hay bale around the storm drains. So if that.
How do you spell that? How do you spell that, Todd?
Merifite, did you say?
Merifite? I would just have to spell it phonetically. Yeah.
I can check on that, but we do have a process, Mary Beth, and a procedure for new home bills. We really weren't addressing it. So it's, we are now, as of now, and as you'll issue the new builds, he's providing a whole document with it and explaining it to all the contractors. And he is going to be going around checking as well. And I also asked Brad if he would take, keep an eye out as well.
Yeah, because it just, I mean, even with the hay bale or whatever, that rinsing off of stuff is what the problem is. So we gotta, I don't know what this merifite thing does, but if it cuts down something, then, you know.
If, if you think about like a cheesecloth, I mean, like a glorified cheesecloth, I mean, that's kind of a good analogy for this conversation. I mean, it's just, it's a lot more durable, so it could withstand, you know, sharper things and things of that nature. Yeah, so I mean, like I said, it's, you know, what's going to make people comply is education and it also being cost-effective. And merifite is not expensive. And, you know, I think, like I said, education's a little, but I think a lot of times people just don't have a clue. They've been rinsing their wheelbarrows and buckets and drains forever. They just don't know. Yeah, or they rinse it in the grass and then once it, you know, goes through the grass, it goes in the storm drain. But merifite's cheap, readily available, you can buy it almost anywhere and.
Does it lay over top? Or, I mean, what happens when we have rain? Do you?
Well, you know.
With the hay bales, the rain worked around it, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, in a perfect world, they would lift the grate and absolute, and, and, and they would put the merifite underneath the grate. So it's, so as the water goes through the grate, the merifite's already there. But, you know, even if they were just willing to put the merifite over the grate and then, you know, just with, with bricks or cinder block or anything, just, you know, try to put some kind of barrier down, it would, it would help out significantly.
Then, but do you, do you have to remove it at, when, at every night? Or, I mean, what happens when it rains? What happens when we have these like torrential downpours? That's when we have flooding on those streets.
Yeah, I mean, in a perfect world, they would only put it down, you know, like in, in the morning and then do whatever it is that they do and then remove it at night. You know, on construction projects, it's, the, the storm grate itself is completely wrapped in the merifite and it's there for months. So it's definitely porous enough to.
Kind of handle.
Yes, exactly. But I just don't think that, I just don't know how comfortable you'd be with people lifting up your storm grates, you know.
All right, so I have a, I have a comment and a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, first of all, with regard to a comment on how we protect those storm drains, that's not something we are going to resolve the best solution here tonight. I think it requires some research and then we need to decide how Cindy, that may go into our building codes or our enforcement. But let's do some research and do, do something which is right and not just off the top of our, top of our head. So that's my comment with regard to protecting our, the storm drains. Todd, can you make those slides available to us? Because we can, we can put those, put a message out on our website. We can, we can send a special message out to, to others as, as well. You know, through, through, through a newsletter that specifically talks about storm water. We have an upcoming Hurricane Preparedness Workshop on the 12th of May. I would like to use some of those slides during that conversation too, because you were right in your comment right off the bat about, you know, it's kind of a cliche, only rain down the drain. But until you see these pictures, you really don't understand what the, what the jeopardy is. So if we could get that, I, I for one would appreciate it. And then the last thing, Bill Kryeski, is can you just briefly summarize what the scope of this particular work that's being done right now is? And what you expect the, the outcome of that to be? What then will be, how that fits into our overall plan?
Yeah, so the, the discussion that took place, and I, I kind of outlayed in, at a very top level, what we were planning to do, and this came under, and most of the expenses associated with this, I don't know if Mary is, Mary's still on the, on the phone or not. But I checked with her, it qualified as emergency work. So what they are actually doing is going in, in each of the districts, especially starting with where we had the major event, ETA, and the impact in, on those streets to go in and what the, the process was. In an ideal situation, they would go in with the camera, on, lift up the, the storm drains, go in with the camera, camera, the, the, the line, basically the outfall line, which starts, in, in some cases, they were able to get it from the street and go out to the outfall. In other cases, they start at the outfall and go backwards and back towards the street where the storm drains are. Once that's done, they didn't understand what they're dealing with. And I will tell you, I said ideal world, that wasn't necessarily the case in a lot of these, and it was a combination of a lot of buildup at the outfall where we couldn't get at the street. So, and also the reduction in the pipe created some challenges too with some of the equipment. So what we did was, in those situations, the idea would be the camera first, so we have a before we jet clean, as Todd was explaining. Once they jet clean, then they come back and re-camera it. So you saw the before and after effect. So we want to make sure when we leave that spot, that we've in effect got 80, 85, I know Todd, what the right number is. In some cases, we might even have as much as 90 maybe percent clean and free flowing. So that's it. Our plan is to then go through now the rest of the areas, focusing in again where we have the problems with the, as a result of ETA. And then once that's done, then if we come up with some situations like we did on 180th Street yesterday, where we found a collapsed pipe, we're going to have to go back and make some repair work. The other piece of it is, which at this point, I don't know, and we probably have put some numbers on it once we decide, there's two pieces after that work is done. One is to, and as I showed at the last meeting, you have those catch valves that are placed on the outfalls. It might be helpful in certain locations to install some additional, additional valves at the end of, of the, where the outfalls are, to stop the leaching of the saltwater from the bay into the storm drains, which creates a lot of what we've, we've seen here, especially when it relates to the oyster clusters and some of the other stuff. And then the other piece of it is to determine, in some cases, where we might have to take those pipes where, as Todd mentioned, reduction, I call it basically where they've actually gone from, I'll call it a transition pipe, where they transition from a 12-inch, say, as Todd mentioned, to maybe a six or an eight inch at the outfall. Well, ideally, that might not be the right choice. In fact, a lot of the engineers that I spoke with in the last month taking over this, telling me that in an ideal world, that pipe should be true and clean. So if it starts out on the street at 12 inches, it should be 12 inches at the outfall. If it's 10 inches at the CDS unit and the storm drains, then it should be at the outfall 10 inches. And so that's something else we need to come back and assess. But at least now, we're looking at an assessment of what we've dealing with, and then we got to come up with a. of what we've dealing with. And then we got to come up with a plan, work with Todd and his team, as well as obviously work with, uh, uh, the commission to figure out what the next steps will be. Now, some of these pipes, uh, the store, the, uh, the, uh, the outfalls, the pipes are on private property or so we have somewhat, I guess, what's called an easement, but not a true town easement. In other cases, we actually have areas where they're fairly wide in between two houses and we can get equipment in there. In other cases, because the houses are so close together and pretty much the pipe in some cases might run along the property line of the two houses, adjacent houses. There, that's going to be a little bit more of a challenge if we have to get in there and do some repair work or even in some cases change some of the, uh, outfalls.
So, so let me, let me try to summarize and see if I got this, this right, Bill. Okay. The first step here is that you're, you're looking at those areas uh, that we know are a problem basically from what we saw with, uh, Etta and where, where we had, where we had flooding and where those, those storm drains are. So you're cleaning up those first. Then you're going to expand that to other, uh, to other areas. And I'm hoping that while you're doing this, we're collecting some data so that at the end of the day, we will have some sort of a blueprint of our stormwater system, size of pipes, those sorts of things so that we can, so that we can develop a plan for how we, how we upgrade, where we upgraded and going, going forward. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and just so you know, Todd's team has the engineering drawings, which, except for one or two right now, pretty much we know where all the CDS units are. We all will know where all the storm drains are. We know where the placement is of the pipes. Now, I will tell you, in one of the instances where we, they almost lost their camera equipment because of the transition pipe and they had to come in from the outfall and work their way back to the street. We, that almost got stuck in the pipe. Now, on the drawing, on the engineering drawing, it said it was a twelve inch pipe. And it was a twelve inch pipe at the CDS unit and the storm drain. When it got to the outfall, it was eight inches. So either somebody repaired that when they did a capping of a seawall, or there was other construction work done there, or something was done to basically modify that. And quite frankly, what was supposed to be there based on the engineer's report when they, they were done and the underground work was done, wasn't done, or it was modified after it was done.
And also I want to be clear that the First Street flooding is not from Etta. It is from
No.
Heavy rainfall, even at low tide, we have flooding. It has been consistent and a constant problem. And that's, so it's not an Etta-based problem. It's fresh water that can't get down the storm drains in a low.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification because, again, I, I'm, I was focused in again on where I thought the majority of the problem was in our town. And clearly, uh, Punkin Key is, uh, basically below sea level anyway. It's going to flood. Uh, I think, uh, on any kind of major event, not something necessarily is, is as strong as Etta. But you're absolutely right, Cindy. There were situations there and quite frankly, the reason, at least the root cause at this point appears to be a lot of what we share, I shared with you and what Todd just shared with you today. Material buildup in there and they hadn't been cleaned in a while.
Did we do something, um, what, when in building, when people put new seawalls in, we should have, we should identify if there are any outfalls in that section of seawall and then have requirements that they don't maybe constrain. Is that happening? I mean, is that part of the problem why we have, the outfalls are smaller?
Yeah, again, uh, unfortunately, we're, we're, we're kind of, it's an after effect here, right? We're only seeing the end result of what took place. I went back and traced a couple, uh, had Mary and actually Tracy pull some, uh, permits that were done in certain addresses. And, um, there was one case where, in fact, this case, the one I'm talking about, if I remember correctly, it was two thousand and three when that seawall was put in. However, that was also the same place where Veronica, for those of you who know her, she, when she acquired her house, prior to acquiring that, she had a major problem there. Uh, or actually you'd say the previous owner before he sold the house. And I'm, my understanding is that there was some activity in that area that was addressed as a result of his complaints, the prior owner before Veronica took it over. So there's been some activity in there. I don't, again, I, I don't want to say, I don't think John, who's the current owner of the hu- house, that, that, that this lies in next to Veronica, I, and had the seawall there. I don't think it was necessarily him. But again, if it's not documented, I don't know how we can go back and really come up with the root cause of it except to see what's the evidence. And the evidence is pretty clear.
Hello, everyone. It's Mary. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sure, Mary.
Okay, so I've just been listening to the conversation and I'm sorry I have to be coming in on the phone mic and whatever. But, um, we, we have the NPDES permit, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination permit, which is a blanket permit under Pinellas County. We have to, in fact, uh, Brad has gone out many times when people call and say there's, somebody's putting something into the water or whatever, and he has to take a form out and fill it out. And this is all part of our annual report. If someone sees a contractor or somebody rinsing something off down the drain, anyone can call in, we send Brad immediately out, and that contractor can be fined per the permit um, that we have. So, while, while you're talking education, which we can do more of, when we send out our newsletter, not only do we send out the flooding information, we send out about the NPDES and its requirements. So, um, we, we already do that. It's just, we, we need to know more when this goes on so we can help stop it. And, um, another thing, um, and it's no fault of Seminole Septics, because I know they come out every year. Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, and you all would come out and clean storm drains and suck out the sand from the, by the grates and whatnot. But I don't think they've ever been told to go in and check our actual storm drain pipes and to clear these out. So we are behind on those. And getting this done is just all part of our NPDES requirements. And, um, that, you know, of course, we have that in the capital improvement budget and we do collect the fees from the residents for that. Um, so that, for these, for these reasons. So, um, I just wanted to add that.
Mary, thank you very much. And, and actually, that, that, there's a good point here, maybe it was kind of missed, um, and I, uh, Michael, I, first of all, did I answer all your questions, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, um, as it relates to the work that's been done prior, my understanding, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think the work that was, that's being done today with the actual televising of these lines has ever been done since the underground work has been done. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That's a, yeah, that's exactly right. That's.
I mean, Todd's been, Todd's, Todd and his dad have been working with the town for twenty some odd or close to thirty years.
Thirty years, yeah.
So there you go.
Yep, that's correct.
So once a year, so what had been happening is that once a year they would get, uh, jetted out.
Not all of them, Jenny.
Right, with some exceptions, the ones that were the grates were cemented in, that was, or that were skipped for whatever reason. Um, yeah, those were just jetted out like once a year, correct?
Correct.
It's not like we need to necessarily do it twice a year, it's that we needed to get the camera down there and see what the problem was.
Correct. I think once they're all really cleaned out and, and repaired, maybe you do that once every two years, but you still come in and do what, Todd, what do you guys do? You come in and you, um, I know Steve Jordan used to go around with you and you, you suck the sand and stuff out from the grate area?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, pretty much what we do is we go out with that, with a, with a vector truck and we basically backing the lines. And what happens in that scenario is when you stop pulling back, you know, debris, you know, you, you just sit there and say, okay, well, we're not pulling anything back. So, um, the assumption is made that the line, okay, well, then it's clean. But we're not cammering it. We're not really drilling into it like we are right now.
Right, right. I have nothing else to say.
Okay.
Except good job.
Thank you.
Todd, thank you very much for spending time with us this evening and, uh, enjoy your dinner.
Hey, thank you guys for having us. And, uh, I've, I've taken some notes and I'll, I'll be in touch with you guys shortly. And thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Um, at this time, I, we have six attendees on the line. Well, five, because Mary's one of those, I guess, was. Um.
I am still here.
Okay. Um, I want to ask for any public comment, if anyone has anything to say on this item, stormwater management. Uh, I guess Sherry, can you look and see if anyone's got their hand raised or?
Okay, out of the five other attendees, I right now have no hands raised. However, I do have one of our panelists, Tim DeBois, his hand is raised. So, Tim, I can unmute your line. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, hi. Good afternoon. Um, I did have one question and, and my question was about the, um, pictures that Todd had provided. Are those specific to, um, what they found in Reddington Shores or those examples of, um, what they found?
I don't know if Todd is still there, but I will speak to, speak to him because he did share with me a little bit the presentation before. Um, we were really, literally working in real time and like he said, a lot of this stuff is stored on, on the truck. He was able to pull some of the stuff that you saw there. I won't say every bit of it. Um, as he mentioned too, there was the, the transition situation where he had almost lost his camera, uh, was not, uh, was not able to be televised. But I would say there were pa- pieces there. It's unfortunately left. I know there were certain pictures that he took that were actually taken in the last couple of weeks. And, and predominantly, actually, the construction stuff, I can tell you right now, that was either at Long Point or on First.
Okay.
Cause I actually had, Tim, I had at the last commissioner meeting, I had a bucket of, of cluster of tiles, um, pieces of tile, pieces of concrete and pieces of, uh, stucco that we pulled out of the, uh, storm drains.
Yeah, I, I was just curious if they were actual pictures from Reddington Shores or if they were examples of things that they had found in the past. So that was my question. I guess to your point also, um, you were talking about like the transition and the, the, I guess, the outflow from, I guess, the street out to the intercoastal, correct?
Yes.
The transition gets smaller. And that's the situation at the drain that's in between my house and the house next door. And there's only six feet, feet between the houses. And I do remember the engineer actually telling me when they were doing it, that they weren't, I guess they had like a twelve inch line or something scheduled to go there. And their concern was if they were to underground, put a bigger, um, drain in that location, um, there was a risk to the foundations of the houses on both sides. So that's what the engineers said. Now, whether it actually got communicated back from the engineer to the city, but I was there when they were looking at it and the engineer told me that at the time. So.
Tim, thank you very much for that information because it's great to have this kind of thing. But what's unfortunate is you've just pretty much solidified what I was concerned about. And one of the options, I guess I'd call it, as to why there was, uh, maps that showed a twelve inch pipe from contiguous pipe from the CDS unit or CDS box in the storm drain out to the outfall. And if they had done that, or there was modifications to that, that was never marked up on the maps that we've been using. And also, uh, uh, Tim, I'm not sure whether you're, uh, the one you're speaking of was one of the, uh, the baffles, the, uh, the, uh, the valves that, that were put in, there were three of them put in, in our, in, in, in our district. And, um, when, uh, they were being measured, they measured one that was twelve inches. And when it came time to actually put it in the outfall, it was eight inches. So they were going by what they saw on the map. And, and my, maybe it wasn't high tide when they, they measured the, uh, outfall. But they made the assumption that what was at the CDS unit, what was on the map was twelve inches. So that's what they ordered. So, uh, I guess somewhat, uh, shame on, uh, whatever. I mean, hindsight's always twenty-twenty. But that should have been marked on the, the maps.
And, and I guess, yeah, one other, and I agree with you, but one other point is, I know, um, the seawall in front of my house and the neighbor's house was changed as well, um, probably a dozen years ago, was rebuilt. And they were permitted. And I know, you know, they had to bring the line through there. At the time, I assume the person doing the seawall was, would know, you know, if they had to extend the line or if they had to do something, what they had to do. I don't know if they added an extension at that point, um, where it is next to my house, but I, you know, I didn't know enough about this whole situation to even question it. Assuming that the seawall contractor knew that information. So I don't know that always the homeowner is going to be aware, um, of what's going on with those outfalls as well. So just, just a comment, if it's on private property or, you know, when someone's private seawall versus one, on the town property. So. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Tim, thank you very much. That was great information, uh, to share with us.
Okay, so moving on to the next item, which is discussion on.
No, I'm not. Uh, I want to make sure that we agree on a couple of takeaways, uh, from this. So we just don't, uh, just don't walk away from it. Um, I would, I would hope that we would do some research and find out what the best way to protect those storm drains are, whether it is, uh, whether it is bales of hay or whether it's this other, uh, product that, uh, that was, uh, that was talked about. So I think that's one issue. I think another one is, once we decide that, I think it would be really great to have a, a one pager that we can provide contractors, those contractors that we see are going to be doing work that's going to be uh, potentially, uh, an issue for us with, with stuff like this. We can educate them on, uh, the, uh, NPDES at the same time. So I'll work with you, Cindy, to put that, put that piece of it together.
And I might not be clear, we have that and we started to do that. That was what I.
Okay, all right, great, great.
But, and it's a packet, it's an NPDS packet, but we can, there's inputs that we can make on it. But I don't want anyone to think that this was left unattended. As soon as, as soon as I found out from Bill's presentation, we immediately started it. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, and then, and then, uh, and then, Bill, uh, from a, from a CRS or an LMS standpoint, um, it's, it, it's important perhaps that we do something communication wise. We add to our communication, particularly about storm drains, because I think that is one of our big problems. We're not, we're not getting rid of the, we're not getting rid of the water. Uh, and so I'll work with you. Maybe we can do another short little newsletter with some of these pictures that were shown tonight that would be helpful. We could post it on the website. We can post it on, uh, on Facebook as well and get the mayor to push it out through, uh, Everbridge.
Yeah.
Those are my comments.
All right. I think those are excellent. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, now let's move on to item two. Um, discussion with the commission and the FAC members for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Yeah, so let me, let me begin by, uh, by saying thank you to the Financial Advisory Committee for joining us tonight. Their expertise and their advice is extremely important to this commission and helping us exercise our responsibilities and governance, uh, of the town. I know we have, uh, at least a couple of new members, uh, on, uh, that are with us tonight, Bill Sanders and Tim DeBois, along with Chairman Howell and Chris Henderson. Thanks again, uh, gentlemen, for, for being here. along with Chairman Howell and Chris Henderson, thanks again, gentlemen, for, for be here, being here. So a critical responsibility of the commission's governance responsibility is to manage the town's financials affairs. And, and not just to be the guardians of the, of the purse strings, so that we don't spend more taxes and taxpayer dollars than what are coming to us, but to spend that, that money wisely. So spending money wisely, what does that mean and spending it on what? And that's kind of the purpose for this, for this discussion tonight. There are three new members of the commission that have never, that weren't on the commission in previous budget cycles, so this is a new experience for all of you, so this is, this is in part helping, helping you and helping us with this new configuration of the commission, work through the budget which starts in October of 2022. A little more intelligently and a little more, a little more focused on what our strategic priorities are and what our responsibilities are than, than perhaps before, so. We sent out to you a while ago, the budget development calendar. And tonight's discussion is the first step in that. You know, so there's this old adage that if, there's this old saying that if you don't know where you're going, almost any road will take you there. And that's what we want to guard, that's what we want to guard against. First of all, we want to know where we're going. So that's understanding what our strategic priorities and objectives are. And then we need to know how long the road is going to be to get us there. And then we need to know how much fuel we can count on in any given budget year to help us get to that objective, so that's my, that's my metaphor for the, for, for the, for the evening. So again, before we start putting dollars and putting numbers on a spreadsheet for the budget, let's first have some intelligent discussion about what our, our critical needs are, what our priorities are and what needs to get done. So if you look at that, that budget development schedule, tonight's that first session. In a minute, we're going to hear from the FAC, they're going to give us some, a brief background on where we're at in this financial year and you know, while some of those folks on the FAC are new, we've got some experienced hands there that can answer perhaps some of your historical questions you might have, or help us where that's, where that's concerned. But at, at the end of the day, let's just have a really good discussion and decide where we, where we need to, to go. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the FAC to get that, that little briefing. After tonight's meeting, we've got about three weeks before then each of the commissioners need to be looking at those areas primarily where they have responsibility for oversight. So Commissioner Blackburn for Parks and Rec, you know, what you, what, what budget numbers your research suggests for the coming year, so begin to develop some of those. But that should be also in the context of what we need to do on, from a global standpoint as well, so. Again, I'm going to turn it over to the FAC to give us that little, little briefing and then we'll just open it up for, for some discussion on what you think is important and how we get there.
So Kirby, I'm not sure if you want to, if you want to do an introduction?
Yeah, I just did, I was on mute though, unfortunately. No, thanks Vice Mayor. We, we've started looking at the budget and of course, part of that is to see what the priorities are for this next year. And we have a set of projects that we'd like to have defined and that's a role that the, we see the commission doing. So that we see our role as basically doing the legwork, the financial legwork for providing the necessary information to make decisions. And I guess to start off with, major thing right now is the budget. And Chris is our veteran budget guy, he's, he's done it for years now and, and he, he's tracked the actuals and he's worked very hard with the budgets. And so I'd like to turn it over to him to talk about where we are today and some of the information we found out.
Okay, thanks Chairman Howell, so my, my charge for today is kind of an interesting one. That is to provide kind of a basic introduction to the town's finances through the three funds. That's task number one, task number two is to provide just a quick overview of our financial performance for the first six months of the current fiscal year. And then task number three is to establish a, a good foundation from which we use to build the upcoming fiscal year 2022 budget. And so I'm going to attempt to do all that in about four and a half hours, so I should have us out of here, my guess is by 11:30. Actually, I'll, I'll make my way pretty quickly, so as you, if you folks have questions along the way, please feel free to step in and, and either ask a question or if you want to wait till the very end. But again, this is really focused on kind of education and information, not only for the new, new commissioners, but also for those who are new to the Financial Advisory Committee. And so again, I'm not going to go through each and every general ledger code, I think that's, that, that would take us entirely too long. But instead, my focus is going to be primarily on the more significant revenue categories and anything that's been kind of a hot topic for the commission as well, anything that's a significant variance, either positive or negative over the course of the last six months. And so just by way of introduction, you know, my name is Chris Henderson, I've served on the Financial Advisory Committee since I believe 2014. And, and have been involved in not only the, the annual budget process, but, but also the financial reporting on a monthly basis. And so I, I've, I've had a lot of experience working with Mary, going through the numbers and, and so what I'll do tonight is kind of give you a quick update on the three funds for the town, and again, this is going to be for our current fiscal year and just by way of reference, the town of Reddington Shores operates on a fiscal year that ends September 30th. So the current fiscal year is going to be from October 1st of 2020 through March 31st of 2021. And so that gives us a, the reason why it's good to do it here is because it is exactly halfway through our fiscal year. Gives us a really good snapshot of how we're performing and gives us a pretty good indication as to how we're going to end the year. And so before I get started, I'll just begin by saying that, you know, overall between the three funds, the general fund, the capital improvement fund and the sewer fund, the town is performing at, at plan and really no significant surprises or issues. We'll talk about a couple minor ones that we'll, that we'll want to address as we go forward, but, but overall, the town is doing fairly well, so. We'll start off in the general fund and again, the general fund is going to be the most significant fund of the three that the town operates and this is really where you're going to see most of the day-to-day activity. The most significant line item on the revenue side, we'll talk about revenues first and then go through expenses and really focus on the bigger ticket items. But the most significant revenue item in the general fund is going to be our ad valorem taxes. And so it represents about half of our general fund collections. And the way that ad valorem comes to us is by simply taking the assessed taxable values as, as determined by the county, which for the town of Reddington Shores last year is about $770 million. And then we apply to that a millage rate, and so if you guys recall from last September, the millage rate was reduced to the rollback rate from 1.8 to 1.69. And so when you apply that 1.69 millage rate to the $770 million of taxable value for real estate here in our town, that's what gives you the budgeted number that we put together, which is about 1.25 million. And so as you take a look through the first six months of the year, we've collected about 1.17 million of that ad valorem tax budget. And the good news is, we're right on track, we had about 56,000 that came in this month, which means that we should have no problem achieving our full ad valorem revenue budget for the current fiscal year. And also, the other good part is, is that Chairman Howell of the Financial Advisory Committee has developed some pretty extensive worksheets that allow us to accurately predict what our collections are going to be. Down to a few thousand dollars, it's pretty darn impressive what we've been able to, to, to build as far as modeling over the course of the last few years, so thank you to him for that. Couple of real quick points on ad valorem, again, I don't, I'm not going to spend this much time on everything else, but, but ad valorem is such a significant portion of what the inbound revenue stream for the town, that it's important that we really understand the terminology. And so I made reference to the rollback rate, this is a conversation that, that you hear a lot of people talk about, but it's really not well understood. But essentially what the rollback rate does is it simply says, for the increase in the valuation from one year to the next, the rollback rate is intended to compensate for that by, if there's an increase in overall assessed values, the rollback rate reduces the millage rate so that the net collection for the town remains the same. And so for us, what that means is that when our value went in 2019 from 716 million to 770, we adjusted to a rollback rate or reduced from 1.8 to the 1.69, so that our net collections on a year-over-year basis are almost identical. And so that's what we've seen, so if you look at the first six months of last year, the first six months of this year, our collections are almost identical year-over-year. That's what the intended purpose of the rollback rate is. So the second thing I just wanted to mention, because this is going to be something you hear an awful lot, people say, well, you know, I pay $3,000 in taxes and I should get, you know, this, that or the other from the town. It's important to remember that a line share of the ad valorem taxes that our residents and our businesses pay go to state and county taxing authorities, so for schools, the general fund, EMS, transit, health department, 90% of every dollar collected in the form of ad valorem goes outside of the town. So the town receives, just as a general rule, about 10% of what of the ad valorem collection is. So if a resident pays $3,000 on their ad valorem bill, approximately 300 of that will come back to the town, and so that's one of those concepts that oftentimes people get a little confused about, but, but two, two important things as we talk about ad valorem. Moving to the next significant area on general fund revenues is the building department. So this is an area that we spend an inordinate amount of time talking about from a revenue and expense standpoint. I know we've certainly had a lot of changes in that, both the, the protective inspection department as well as an outsourced relationship now with SafeBill. So we'll talk first about the revenues and then I'll get into the expenses here shortly. So from a revenue standpoint, really the best way to look at that is simply to take the seven GL accounts from the financials that we send out on a monthly base and aggregate those together. And then from that, evaluate what our performance is. And so as you take a look at the first six months of this year for building permit, plan review related fees, we've received about $95,000 in fees for the first six months of this year. And we had budgeted for that same time period about $65,000. So the good news is, is that from a revenue standpoint for the building department, we're about $30,000 ahead or call it $45,000 or 45% ahead of what our budget was, so that's good. Now, the one thing to keep in mind is that it's actually, we're actually doing much better than what the numbers reflect. And the reason I say that is because, as many of you know, the town made the decision to waive certain fees associated with permits for repairs related to Hurricane Ada. And so what that does is that essentially, and we're going to have this conversation when we get to the cost side of it, what that means is that the true permit fee number on a gross basis is much higher than what's been reflected in the financials. So it has been extremely busy, is I guess what I'm trying to say, for our building department over the course of the first six months of this year. So any other questions before I move on to the last revenue section on the general fund relating to building permit revenues or ad valorem revenues? Okay, alright, parking meter, this is one, it's not a huge dollar amount, it's a $100,000 revenue budget that we have, but it's one that if you guys are looking at the financials for the first six months, you might say, hey, we're a little behind our plan. So we've collected about $28,000 at the county park, that's for the period from October through March of this year. And so if you simply straight line our budget, our budget was $100,000, that means, you know, we put in $50,000 for a budget for the first half of the year. Keep in mind that the most significant revenue collection, as you would expect, is going to be in the summer months. And so we should easily, you know, catch up to that, to that $100,000 figure, so I'm not overly concerned about that. And then the new line item that you see in there, the $9,500 that we collected, that's for the two, that's for the new meters that we installed for the town lots, and so that's a, we didn't budget for it, we didn't really know that was coming up when we put together the budget a year ago. But that's a, a, another positive contribution to the town of $9,500 for the first six months. The only other two remaining items in the general fund that are significant revenue items, garbage service revenues. The good news is, we're right in line with our budget, so we had budgeted about $182,000 for collections for trash and garbage services, and so that's right in line with plan, so, so that's all good. There is one area that is a negative in terms of an unfavorable variance for a general fund and that isn't necessarily fault of our own, but, but that is in the form of interest income, and so I think many of you saw the email that circulated today from Paul. But it's, you know, as, as many of you know, we saw a dramatic decline in short-term and midterm interest rates, which really began in, in the spring of 2020. And so that decline was something that we didn't anticipate when we budgeted our interest income for the general fund, which means that we will more than likely miss our consolidated interest income plan by about $40,000. So, you know, the good news is, I think we, we have a really good feel, I think Paul put together a good analysis and we'll use that as a basis for estimating, we did maybe a little bit more conservative in our approach. But that's really the only negative, but it's a, you know, it's, it's not something that causes, should cause alarm, it'll be a $40,000 shortfall. But, but based upon the other positive variances we've had on the general fund, I don't expect it to have a significant impact on us total for the year. Moving on to general fund expenses, so salaries, we'll take that one and, and what I'll, what I'll do, simply because there really isn't any significant variances or reason for concern, is I'll just take the, the three areas or the four departments that we usually refer to just by way of education here, so the legislative section that you see there, it's called legislative, but what that really means is that represents the commissioners, you know, monthly pay, the executive, which is town, the town clerk and deputy clerk, and then physical environment, which is the maintenance staff. And so all three of those departments are under budget through, through the first six months of the current fiscal year, so right in line with plan, with costs slightly lower than what we budgeted. The only department that had salaries that exceeded our budget was for protective inspections, that's the building department. Simply because we did not budget to have any staff in the building department. And as, as everybody knows, in, because of the volume of work we have coming through the building department in December of 2020, we added a permit tech, that's Tracy, and so that's what's causing the $7,600 unfavorable variance. Again, it's 7,600 of expense with no budget amount. So that, now that we kind of have a much better feel for what the, the future expense is going to be, not only the outsourced to SafeBill, but also for Tracy. You know, Commissioner Crock, I'll work with you or the Financial Advisory Committee will work with you as we develop a, a more refined model as it relates to our, our, our salaries and then outsourced costs to SafeBill. So all in all, from a salary standpoint, on a consolidated basis, the town is within a few thousand dollars of our plan, so that's, that's a good thing. Moving to professional services, so attorney's fees was the only thing that we saw a negative variance on. So outside of the standard month-to-month retainer that I mentioned in my notes to you folks, we had about $8,000 worth of a negative variance, it's primarily related to the legal costs associated with the town's response to, to one of our property owners pending or threatening litigation against the town, so I think it's one that most everybody's familiar with. But that's the primary driver behind that negative variance on attorney's fees. Insurance is one that, that, that may need some work. As you look at the, the results for the first six months of the year, what you'll see is that we have a spend of about $59,000 on a budget of 33, which, which on first blush, that, that's pretty alarming. And so as I started drilling down into the detail of it, and I've been working with Mary over the course of the last few months on the different components to this, but it's certainly an area that I would encourage us, the Financial Advisory Committee, may to play a, a more significant role in on a go-forward basis. But what you see is, is that we have three quarterly payments included in the first six months, which that's a timing difference, it's about $14,000. That will work its way out by the end of the year. Probably the more alarming thing or the concerning thing, I guess I should say, is the, the, the other increases that we saw year-over-year for our insurance. And so again, we're working through that right now and, and I don't, you know, I'd love to tell you I've got a great answer for it, but we simply don't. So there's, there's about a $13,000 difference that we're working our way. So there's, there's about a $13,000 difference that we're working our way through. It's a combination of both a prior period audit adjustment, from what I can understand, as well as a premium increase that on the surface looks like about a 50% increase in the premium that, that we just simply need to spend more time understanding and getting our arms around. And so the good news is, I think for the Financial Advisory Committee, we have a, we have a couple of folks who are joining the committee that have some experience in insurance. And so we'll certainly want to rely upon them to, to provide additional insight. So I'll try to provide more clarification to this topic as we move forward. But, but right now, that's, that's kind of the only significant negative that we see in the general fund from an expense standpoint. The only other big item on expenses is going to be the building department expenses. I talked about the addition of Tracy and the salary for that. The, the line item that you see, which is called building department expenses, that represents the amounts that are billed by SafeBill. And so we ended the first half of the year about 18,000 higher than we budgeted. And so that's primarily as a result of the increase in building permits that I talked about earlier. So the good news is that overall, our building department's spend is 30,000 less than our revenues, okay? And so, you know, it's, what we saw is the increase in our building department revenues more than offsets the increase in our building department expenses. And so, you know, I don't see that as an area that gives me a great deal of concern on a go-forward basis. But again, we do need to make sure that we have a clear model on both anticipated revenues on a go-forward basis, whether we intend to have any other concession to permit fees like we had with Hurricane Ada, because that does have a significant impact financially. And then also determine what is going to be the breakout between in-house versus outsourced services for the building department. And that's something that's a longer-term conversation. But it's important that we at least start that soon as we work our way into the upcoming fiscal year 2022 budget. So all in all, for the general fund, we, the first six months of the, of fiscal year 2021, our total revenues have exceeded our expenses by about $622,000, which is considered a positive net effect for the general fund. Before you guys all get excited about what, what would otherwise look like it's going to be a million-dollar, you know, positive for the year, keep in mind, as I said at the very beginning of my, of my presentation, that ad valorem taxes all come in in the first half of the year. And so we always see a weighting or front-loading of those revenues. The last half of the year, our revenues remain straight line based upon what they are without ad valorem. And so, but, but based upon where we're tracking right now, I anticipate we're going to end up very close to what our budget is. And as you do a year-over-year comparison, it's, it's almost uncanny how close our revenues are year, you know, last year at this point versus this year at this point. And then adjusted for the couple of items I've talked about, our expenses appear to be in line as well. All right, moving quickly to capital improvement funds. So the capital improvement fund is, is, is one that the primary revenue driver is going to be one cent sales tax and, and county grants and LDU money. And I'll talk about each one of those separately. So for one cent sales tax, that's going to be the penny for Pinellas. That's the infrastructure sales surtax. And so, so far, for the first six months of this year, we've collected about $123,000, which is about 10 grand ahead of what we had budgeted. So, so it appears that people are out spending money, which is a good thing for, for the town in, in terms of the one cent sales tax penny from Pinellas that the town receives. One negative, I guess, in, in the capital improvement fund from a revenue standpoint is, is in terms of LDU and transportation impact fee. So just by way of kind of history here, LDU is a fee and transportation impact is a fee that's charged primarily for new home construction. And so what's interesting is that despite the fact that this point last year, we had four new home starts in, in last fiscal year, the first six months. This fiscal year, despite all of the, all of the activity on permits, we haven't had a single new home construction start between October 1st and March 31st. And so, so as a result, we, we budgeted for LDU money. We just anticipated somebody would build a new house, and there has been none. And so as a result, you know, we are below our plan for LDU. It's not a significant dollar amount, but, but again, it represents a negative variance and one that's a bit unusual, simply because we have so much activity, but no new home constructions. But my guess is, you know, as Commissioner Crock will probably tell me, there's, there's probably two or three in the hopper they're getting ready to hit. And, and, and when those do, that will help us to make up for what I believe was a conservative estimate for LDU and transportation impact fees for the current fiscal year. The only other item is the county grants. And so last year, at this time, when we were putting together the budget for the current fiscal year, we estimated about $195,000 worth of expense. And if we have expense, we're going to have a request for reimbursement from the county. We had no significant expense this year, so we had no significant request for reimbursement, which means our county grant budgeted revenue numbers is, is, is non-existent, which is okay, simply because you missed the revenue and you missed the expense. It's a net wash for the town, so not an area for concern. From an expenditure standpoint on the capital improvement fund, you know, I mentioned Gulf Boulevard beautification, that is the, that is ref, that's the point that I was mentioning a minute ago regarding the grants from the county. The only other significant area in there, I just want to, by way of, again, education here, debt service principal and interest. For those of you who were around back in 20, or 2006, the town took out a $5 million loan for the undergrinding of utilities on the side streets. And so over the course of the last, I guess it's been 14 and a half years, we paid that note down to about $1.28 million. So it matures here, December of 2025. And so the amount that you see in the March financials, that represents one of the semi-annual payments that we make. And so broken out between principal and interest. So the, the one thing that I would mention as a possible project for the commission to either consider or have the Financial Advisory Committee consider it would be, you know, does it make sense in light of the fact that our current interest rates, as I mentioned earlier, are so dismal? Does it make sense for us to consider, you know, an early payoff of that note? So with interest rate, the interest rate on that note is about 4.72%. And an early payoff could yield at least $100,000 benefit to the town. Again, there's some work to be done. I, I haven't looked at the terms of the loan document, determined if, what if any penalties would apply for early payoff. But certainly that's something that we may want to consider since we have sufficient cash and more importantly, we're, you know, we're not getting anything for that cash sitting in the current investment. So again, just a topic for future conversation. All right, last but not least, the sewer fund. So the great news is, is that from a revenue standpoint, we're right on track with our plan. We had budgeted about 400, I think 470,000 or 468,000. Right now, it looks like we're at 478 that we build to residents and businesses during the first half of the year. So that means we're about 10,000 ahead of our budget, budgeted collections. And, you know, for the sewer, it's always a good time to take a look, you know, where were we last year at this point? And so last year through March, we had billed about $424,000. So what that means is that from a year-over-year comparison standpoint, the billing and some of the changes that this commission has, has approved and put in place related to billing rates for the, for the, for the sewer charges, it's increased about 13% year-over-year, so helping to offset the 10% increases from the county that have, that have been applied over the course of the last few years. So again, from a revenue standpoint, we're good to go on, on the sewer fund. Now, expenses, that's not necessarily the case. And so as we've talked before, from a repair and maintenance standpoint, we've had, you know, we, we haven't had significant investments so far this, this fiscal year. We did have significant investments in prior fiscal years. And so we've got a unfavorable variance on sewer repairs and maintenance, but it's offset by a favorable variance on the capital improvement major rehab. So based upon some of the projects, it sounds like we have upcoming, my guess is that those two will kind of work themselves out by the end of the current fiscal year. But probably the more alarming one is the treatment charges. This is what is billed to the town by the county. And so for the first six months of the current year, the financial statements that, that you folks have in your hands, since we record the expense one month in a year, unfortunately, what you have there is five months' worth of expense. So if you adjust that to include the March bill, that puts our actual expense number at about $446,000 for the first six months of the year. That's what the town of Redding Chores has been billed by the county for processing the sewer volumes that are, that are, that, you know, make their way out of the town and are read by the, by the county meters, so $446,000. If you compare that to what we budgeted for the first six months, what that means is we've got about a $71,000 negative variance on sewer processing charges, okay? So, so we, I believe we put together a fairly conservative estimate as it relates to sewer processing charges. As it turns out, the expense has been greater than we expected to the tune of about $71,000 for the first six months of the year. Now, again, there's a difference in, in, in rain volume that we've talked about in the past throughout the year. And so that may or may not continue the trend through the remaining half of the year. But again, it's an alarming trend and one that, you know, certainly makes it a priority, a heightened priority for the town to continue the work that we're doing in identifying groundwater intrusion and, and, and other matters related to the town sewer. So if you compare where we are for the current year, our 446 spend to last year at this time, so the first six months of last year, we had paid about $360,000 to the county for the first six months of this year. And so what that means is that year-over-year, our costs have increased by about $86,000, which is about a 24% increase year-over-year. So for those who were under the, the impression that everything in the sewer had been resolved and things were good and not an issue anymore, the numbers provide clear evidence that, that we, that our problem is greater today than it was last year. And, and so again, reinforcing the importance of this topic as we move forward, simply from a financial standpoint. So that's it from a, I hate to end on a negative note, because as I said at the very beginning, overall, from a revenue standpoint and expense standpoint, each one of the three funds show, show very positive results for the first six months. I don't have a concern at all that the town will be able to achieve on a consolidated basis, our budget for the, the current fiscal year. But my hope is what this does is it provides some food for thought as it relates to upcoming projects, also provides an education for purposes of, of developing the upcoming budget. And, and again, hopefully this is something we can, we can do more often than once every three years. Anyway, that's it for me. And if you folks have any questions, I'm more than happy to take them either on this call or you can send them by email, whatever your preference is.
Thank you, Chris. I think we'll really, really appreciate that, and we really appreciate the work that you do, that Kirby's done. And again, I, I sent Paul's message out to the commission for two reasons. One, to give him the information, and also just to highlight the talent that we have on the FAC. And we're really, we're really blessed as a town to have all you folks on that committee. And to the new members, particularly those that have insurance background, boy, you're coming in at the right time, because we can get some projects going, going for you as well. So if there are any questions on, on the budget, fine. If not, I kind of want to move into the, to a discussion now.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
The Paul's email was talking about shortfalls on the interest earned. And I don't see here, maybe it's on a different report, what are the balances on which we receive interest?
Commissioner Blackburn, so I think what you're, if you're, if you're asking, what is the, what is the dollar amount of the assets that we have invested?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we receive interest on, right?
Correct, yeah. So, so there's a separate, what we just went through was the income statement that shows the revenues and expenses for the town. There's a separate balance sheet that Mary provides on a monthly basis that shows the assets and liabilities of the town. And so that's where that would be reflected. And there's a separate report that we receive on a monthly basis from the, the institution where we have our deposits that, that will provide that information as well. So we can get that, we can get that for you, not only as a response to that question, but on a monthly basis. It's something that you should be receiving.
Okay, because I, I don't remember receiving that. Maybe I did and I, but I've never received anything like that. More of a balance sheet, right? Not an income statement?
That's right.
Okay, just curious.
And all that generally goes out along with, along with the, along with everything. But we'll make sure that you.
Okay, to the finance committee or it goes out to the commissioner?
Goes out to the commission. Well, we were, generally, the way that process works is that Mary sends that out to, generally to, to Chris and I, we look at, see if we have any questions, make sure that everything's accurate. And then once it is, Mary ships that off to the, to the commission.
Okay.
How often do we get that?
Monthly.
Oh, okay.
So that's in the, that's in our packets for the meetings, I think.
No, no.
Or at least this is.
Couple of, it, it depends on a couple of, a couple of, of, of things. One is Mary prepares that, but she's got to get the, the books closed for the month. So we generally run just a little bit behind where that's concerned. Mary worked extra hard to get us through the first six months so that we would have all that data for this particular meeting. But yeah, we generally run a month behind yourself, just because of the workload.
Yeah, Commissioner Blackburn, what may make sense is, and I can work offline with Mary on this, the, the balance sheet and, well, the balance sheet that is generated from the system is a bit challenging for even me to understand. And so I end up taking that balance sheet and converting it into, break it out by fund and then have a consolidated balance sheet with a trend that shows, you know, detailed balances both of cash and investments and each one of the asset categories. And so if you'd like, I'm happy to send that to the commission as part of kind of a monthly package. I think what you've received in the past has simply been an income statement. It's been the custom report that shows revenues and expenses, both year-to-date, month-to-date, and then comparison of actual to budget, and then the full year budget. I don't believe that you've received a balance sheet. I know it, it used to go out a while back, but, but certainly that's something, it may make sense for, for the Financial Advisory Committee to send that to the commission either as part of a monthly package or, or, you know, some other method. But I can work with Mary offline to, to come up with that.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So let's, let's talk about our, our priorities. And I think we've already heard a couple. I know that we're working hard on stormwater, and that's a good example of, of what we need to do, which is A, understand what our problem is, and we're working toward that, and understand what budget dollars we need to put into that in, in the upcoming, in the upcoming budget and/or what additional expenditures we may have, we may have this year. But I'm just going to open this up. I'm going to throw it open to the rest of the, to the commission to talk about whatever topics that you think are critical to us that we address in this coming, in this coming year.
Yeah, so if I could, so we talked earlier in the meeting about the stormwater activities. The other piece of, one of the other pieces of my responsibilities has to do with the sewer system. And Chris had highlighted somewhat of an unsettling trend, I'll call it, and the expenditures that were, were paying out as it relates to treatment of the sewer waste in the town. So the other priority that I had started and, and been working with the Miller Pipeline Group and the Shenandoah subcontractors that are actually out in the field is, and I brought this up at a couple of different meetings and get, provide a little bit of a status, similar to what we were doing with the stormwater, we're going to also do with, and it started this past Monday, Um, is, uh, an investigation of all those sewer laterals in the town that we own. Uh, and come up with an assessment as to the condition of those, um, laterals as well as the manholes. And also the four lift stations. Um, so. We will be working and have, or I should say the, uh, Miller Pipeline Group has been working towards that assessment. And similar to, uh, the, doing televising of these lines. I will tell you that, uh, they started on the north side of the town. And, um, the first day in, um, we found a, I'll call it for lack of a better word. Hopefully not too alarming to some, a gusher already, a significant intrusion already in the north. Part of town, um, which probably, uh, I don't think it's that, that's, that's single incident. That we've isolated right now with the first couple of days worth of work is going to be the major component. But it's probably a, a component of why our bills are kind of increasing. So we're going to.
I'm sorry for interrupting, but, uh, you know, taking this on a high, to a higher level. You know, if, if this sewer system, if we're losing money on it and we have invested tons of, of. Money into trying to repair it. Shouldn't we look seriously at, at selling this to the, to the county? Even if they, even if they give us very little for it, we'll stop losing money?
Yeah. I, uh, thought that, um, when we started this project, I didn't think we had enough empirical data to make that decision. Mike, um, and it's definitely something to consider, uh, but I would think that, uh, quite frankly. Once this, uh, work is done, um, the, the initial number, at least for the work that they're stating. Uh, and, and it gave to us at one of the presentations that was made by Miller Pipeline was in the area of about a million five. Nowhere near the eight million dollars that, um, or, or, or around number of eight million dollars. That the, uh, PCU wanted to, uh, basically us to spend before they would even consider taking over. And the, and by the way, they still, and, and have not provided nor we have, we asked for what the. Um, net number would be or what they would be willing to give us for our sewer system. So I think that, um, at this point, uh, I think it's not, and I don't think we're necessarily losing money. Uh, per se, um, I will say this much, that I think in prior years, there's been, uh, what I'll call probably. A, uh, not enough focus put on maintaining and maintaining the system itself. Yet we were collecting revenues and we do have a pot of money. Um, I mean, uh. Commissioner Blackburn mentioned about the, uh, a balance sheet. Uh, there's a number out there that sits. That we've collected over the years in the sewer fund, um, that sits there right now. And it's a significant amount of money. I don't know if Chris has that number handy. Uh, but it, that revenue or the monies that are out there, uh, in some cases probably. Uh, it sits there because of the lack of investment to maintain the system. And make the upgrades and make the cost there or incur the cost to ensure that, uh, our system is maintained. So, um. That's something else I'm considering proposing as part of our budget for next year. And, uh, in addition to the work there also, there's a couple other, uh, pieces of, uh, expenditures. That need to take place. Um, one is, um. The costs associated, and we talked about it at the last meeting, about looking for grant money. So there might be opportunities for us, uh, to leverage grant money to offset some of these expenses. To, to the town. Um, and that should help us in kind of, uh, I guess offsetting some of the expense. That we're going to be teeing up, uh, for next year. Uh, one other item, uh, it's actually, uh, is that we do not have generators today in the town that could run these lift stations. So if we have a major event right now, um, we're going to be in the, uh, so to speak, in the queue. With a whole host of other Berry Island towns looking for generators or seeking out generators to keep. The town from, uh, a significant event, uh, where there could be an opportunity where. God forbid, uh, wastewater is now, uh, leaching because the pumps, the lift stations are not working. So that, and that, that cost, uh, right now is a, a kind of a swag, but it's about a thirty thousand dollar expense for two diesels. Two diesel, uh, generators. And then there would be diesel fuel costs associated if we had to run those. Um, so that, and those are some of the expenditures in addition to the work that Miller has sort of teed up for us to talk about. And then of course, obviously, once the assessment is done by Miller, uh, right now, I, I, I don't even know how we could. Uh, at this point, we might be, uh, thirty days or sixty days from now in position to understand what condition. Uh, the laterals are as well as the manholes and the, and the lift stations. To determine, uh, what additional costs we're going to have to incur to, uh, repair and or replace. Uh, the sewer system, lines.
Hey Bill, I, I've got a comment. Uh, you know, I've been knee deep in the sewer thing for the last several years now. And I think any analysis that we do, we need to take two parallel paths. I mean, we've got. What the county thinks that it'll cost to repair the sewer system. They, they gave a very, very credible analysis to me. It was twenty-three pages long. It's got a lot of detail in it. I think we need to seriously look at that. Along with the other side of it is making our own repairs, but I kind of question why a town of this size. With two employees and no monitors on the lift stations want to undertake a sewer system. If, if somebody, if we can outsource that thing, it, it sure makes a lot of sense to me. So I just want to make sure that as we look through this analysis, that we look at it from both perspectives.
Right. I think that's a fair, that's a fair statement.
Oh, but so, uh, Kirby, what you have is the proposal that included, uh, the county saying. That the town needed to spend eight million dollars before they would consider purchasing the system from us?
Well, you see, that's not clear to me. And I don't think we have enough information. And I think we need to find out more. Because the verbiage in the document that we have says that if we were to purchase your sewer system. We would have to make these changes. It doesn't say.
They, we, we us or we that?
We be Pinellas County. It, it doesn't say, it doesn't say that you need to make these changes. If we're going to consider buying you. Now, that could be just the person's opinion that wrote, you know, the document. Uh, but what I think we should, should do is get the interested people that have knowledge in this to get with the county. Find out exactly, you know, have our FAQs in line and find out exactly where they stand on this. Um, you know, I, I tend to think, shoot, if they'll take us, take it off our hands and bring it up to their standards. Because when you read that document, we are not anywhere close. The, the mon, the lift stations are, are just really. We don't have the monitoring things that they expect to have in all their lift stations. We don't have anybody to monitor them, even if we had the monitoring. Equipment. So I just think we need to look very carefully at that.
Sure. And I just want to make sure they're not just, I think they, in the car business, they call it black in the car. Just like, oh, it's a terrible, terrible system. We have to spend all this money. And so we, you, we usually charge us this much for it, you know?
Yeah.
That they're hoping for a discount. Maybe I just want to make sure they're not doing that.
I, I agree. Well, it's hard to say. Yeah, there's, there's two ways to look at that. The other people can come in and say, no, it only take two million dollars to do. And you know, that's my saying, you know, confidence is the feeling you have before you know the whole story. And you hear about government cost overruns all the time. And what kind of guarantee? Do we have that we say, okay, we're going to do it ourselves and it doesn't come out nine million dollars? And so these are the kind of things, I mean, this is going to take some work. We, we need to really look very hard at this, I think.
I don't know if we've ever had a full story about the sewer.
I would agree Kirby, but, um, I would do want to say something. I'm not saying this is necessarily the experience, uh, with people. Here in Pinellas County, uh, and, and towns that have turned over their sewer systems. But I can speak from firsthand experience in Pennsylvania, in southeastern Pennsylvania where I, I have a residence. Or I should say own a home now, when it's not my residence. And, uh, about ten years ago. Uh, the town mandated that we take all our septic systems and convert them to the sewer system that was being installed. The first bill I got was over ten thousand dollars to run basically a line from their main to my house. And also then the cost associated with eliminating the leaching field and the tank, the retaining tank associated with that. And since then, I have not seen anything but significant, in some cases, double-digit increases. In my cost of sewer. And to just kind of give you a swag, I normally would pay about two hundred dollars every two years. To have my retaining tank from my, my septic system drained. And I can tell you right now, that number that I get billed. Is way beyond two hundred dollars on an annual basis. So we might maybe think we're getting a great deal upfront. But be careful what we're going to be paying and, and going down in the future as far as what.
My, my comment on that is, is that we're, we're, we're about to switch our billing process. Over to, uh, to one that's based upon water usage. And we're using the same numbers that Pinellas County is using for their, uh, sewer. And water, uh, system and their fees. We are one of the few municipalities. In Pinellas County that still operates their own system. Uh, and I'm not heard from people I know in other communities where Pinellas runs their, their system. Uh, dissatisfaction with that. I, I agree with, with what you're doing with Miller. To try to, uh, understand where we're at with laterals and move down that, that path. But, but, uh, you know, from my standpoint, I, I don't see why we can't do both things at once. You know, open a dialogue with Pinellas County so that when we reach a point where we've got. Where we can compare what we're doing with, with Miller versus what, you know, the county, uh, may propose. That we can make a more informed, uh, informed decision. I mean, that's my, that's my view.
Yeah. And for the, for the record, I just want to make sure.
Put words in Bill Kraszewski's mouth, but it sound like you're saying that we need to be careful that the county doesn't then turn around and stick it to. Like once they own it, that they don't turn around and try to stick it to the individual, uh, residents.
Let me, uh, let me comment. Let me comment to that. All the, okay, this is one thing we're going to verify in the meeting. But those rates that Pinellas County charges are the same across the whole Pinellas County sewer system. They don't charge Reddington Chores more than they charge anybody else. And you can also get online and look and see what the charge is going to be. Next year, what the charge is going to be the next year after that, and the charge is the next year after that. Now, the problem we have. If we keep our own sewer system, sure, we're at the same par right now. But if we don't correct this problem where we're being charged more than, uh, we're bringing in, we're going to have to have a rate higher than what Pinellas County is. And that's, that's a major problem because, you know, right now, we don't have any control over it. We've spent, I don't know. Thousands of dollars relining pipes and it keeps getting worse. So that's my concern. I, in the back of my head, I said, we have a ticking time bomb here. And that may be just me, but, uh, that's what I've seen in the, in the numbers over the last two years.
Right. I was just thinking that, like, what he was talking about was like a, like the, like a loading fee. And these other beach communities have been, uh, letting, uh, haven't owned their sewer system for a long time. Uh, you know, but we would be, if we would be new at that, would our citizens be charged any kind of loading fees or anything like that? Like what Kraszewski experienced?
No, what he's talking about is converting from a septic tank to a sewer system. It's a totally different thing. Your home has a septic tank and you are charged to get put on the sewer. It has nothing to do with what we, we are doing here. Uh, now they would have a proposal if they're saying, okay, we're going to take over your sewer system, but you're going to pay us instead of we're going to pay you for it. I mean, but until we get that, we, we don't have anything to compare it to on the other side.
Right. And I, I just want to make sure for the record, it's clear. I have not made any decisions, nor do I have any, um. I'm going, approaching this with a very open mind here. And I'm not saying that the proposal from Pinellas County isn't fair. Um, I, and I would agree with Kirby. There were a lot of questions that are still unanswered. Um, I was given that report literally, uh, with less than twenty-four hours after I took over managing the sewer system. I, I got voted in on Wednesday night and Thursday morning. I just happened to be in town hall and about ten o'clock. Uh, two of the representatives of PCU showed up at the doorstep. Mary didn't know anything about it. I didn't know anything about it. And then here's this document put in front of me that I'm seeing for the first time. So I have not had any additional dialogue with them. Except for a phone call a couple of days ago, because at that, at this point, I had not taken any direction from the town. To do anything or any, open any dialogue. The only thing that took place, uh, two days ago was a conference call or yesterday. I'm losing track of time, um, was to ask where we were with this. And I relate to them what I relate to you folks right here. That the commission hasn't made any decisions regarding selling the system to them and that we're not in, we don't feel we're in a position yet. But I did also share with them that we are also going through and looking and doing some investigation work as well as assessment. As to the current condition of our system, including the four lift stations.
Given Kirby's, given Kirby's knowledge of this and Bill's, uh, knowledge of this and responsibilities. Um, I, I for one, uh, would like to see the two of them work with the county to try to. Define their proposal a little bit more while Bill pursues what he's doing with, with Miller Pipeline. I mean, that's my, that's my. Feelings on it.
I, I would agree with that. If I could also bring Chris in, uh, Chris has been tracking all this stuff for years and years. And he knows rainfalls compared to everything else. And so he can intelligently speak for certain points that they may raise. That, uh, you know, may not be appropriate to raise. So I would feel a lot more comfortable if Chris and I represented. The FAC along with Bill.
I'm, 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 I like working with Chris.
I like that.
Are you on board, Chris? Okay.
So I know this is a workshop, but I guess we probably would have to, uh, um, do something at our next commissioner meeting to kind of formally.
I don't.
Or not.
I don't think so.
No?
We, this is just a consensus thing. I mean, you're just gathering, we're not voting on anything.
You're just getting information.
We're just getting information.
Okay. I just, again, I keep saying this, I just don't want to be in any situation where we violate any sunshine laws or something by doing this or moving forward.
No, no, I, I think, I think you have to do that. And then I think you have to bring it back to the, to the commission. And either, you know, we continue workshopping it or we, or if there, we reach a point where there's a decision that has to be made that. That we have, something we have to vote on, then it has to be done at a commission meeting.
Okay.
Right, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, can we circle back? So, so what you're talking about here, Bill, with both of these issues that you have oversight for. With the, the sewer and stormwater, that's, that's infrastructure.
Yes.
I, I like, I like using that along with the president and all, and everybody in Congress, what infrastructure, uh, what infrastructure means. Uh, to me, it means those, those particular things that, that you're dealing with, you're dealing with there.
Um, I, I like that. What's the definition of infrastructure, not necessarily Washington DC's definition?
So, so I know that, that, uh. Commissioner Kraut has had, has had an issue stormwater wise, particularly on, on First Street. And I know what your plan is. Particularly on on First Street, and I know what your plan is, Bill, that we discussed here earlier. Is there something? Will we will we have enough? So so your your plan is that is to do a little bit more work. Be able to come up with a plan so we can load uh the proper dollars into next year's budget?
Yes, for both both uh pieces, both stormwater as well as sewer.
Okay, so so.
Then there are some uh again, um how we account for this, whether it's a capital item or whether it's an operating expense. Meaning, for instance, the diesel generators. Or uh, you know, I mean. There are some things that, I mean, the diesel generators, if we have an event and we don't have anything to run those lift stations. Uh we're gonna be in line with everybody else looking for that stuff and doling for. Doling for uh support and help if we have a major event come up between this coming June and 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 November. So that's.
So we've talked something.
That's something that does have, I think, has to be discussed sooner than later. And I'm in the process of gathering some information right now, and I have a couple. Uh estimates on those generators.
You're, I think your generator costs that you gave are a little bit uh low, and just so you're aware of it. We have uh generators loaded into the county LMS uh projects, two generators as a matter of fact. Whether or not we get any funding for those, that still sits out there and it could be some time. But there's also been discussion as part of the the LMS committee. About uh communities like us who have generator needs, who don't who don't have it. So from an emergency management standpoint. And talking with with those folks, there is some recognition. That that we and and others. Would have needs that the um uh. Uh uh local agreements within within Pinellas County could help us out, so. I'm not quite as concerned as you are uh about. Jumping on board and running out and buying generators right away. As long as we have a solution.
All right, well, just because they. Yeah, but I but I would say that just because uh there's something in a budget, doesn't mean we spend it. I'm I'm just saying to you that I think there should be some monies, and maybe it's one generator, not two. But I think there's, again, we're talking about a budget, not incurring an actual expense. And I just don't think that uh it'd be prudent to not at least consider that as as something, and we could. In the first round or two, it could stay in and get dropped at the end, so.
Yeah, but there's also, there's there's also storage and maintenance to consider with those. And monthly, they have to be started up and, you know.
Oh yeah, that's right. I did say that there was additional costs associated with.
Yeah.
And maintenance, so it's just not the base cost of the purchase of the actual two generators.
So I so I see where you're coming from, Bill, and I totally understand that from from a budgeting process. You know, we 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 put a lot of things into the into the mix in the initial. Uh budget proposal, and as we meet together and as we whittle it down, some things uh fall off, some things don't. So I understand exactly what you're what you're saying. Uh and I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and then there are two other items, though, I wanted to speak to also. And I brought the one up at the last meeting, and then there was one that was brought up prior. And one has to do with a grant writer. I think we need to put something in the budget, whether it's related to grants that would fall into my two areas or even into your area, Mike. Um I think we need to probably put something in there for that. And then also uh there needs to be an engineering study and more of a hydrologist type. Study associated with the town, and we did talk about that. And I just want to let the committee know that I'm in the process. I started the draft up. Based on the requirements, the CCA requirements, since it's an engineering study. We would have to go out if the commission agrees. But it's something too that I think we need to take into consideration in the budgeting process for an engineering study associated with. The town and the whole stormwater management. Um. Uh process uh to understand exactly what we need to do, whether it's addressing. The number of outfalls we have, the number of uh uh CDS boxes we have. Uh the 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 placement of those about those uh valves that I've mentioned. The diameters associated with the with the existing infrastructure and whether or not there would be have to be some. Work done to uh obviously uh correct some of the uh. The pain from the past associated with those laterals, so. Um that's something else I'm working on right now, and I will probably be presenting that at the next meeting come uh May, I mean, Mar- in May.
Okay, with with uh and and that's great, because I think that's that hydrologist report, understanding what what we what we need to do. That that helps define where we're going with regard to uh to grant writing. Um just so, just so you're aware, I one of the areas that I think that that. That uh grant dollars are more likely available to us for. Would be uh s- the stormwater project versus uh versus sewer. Uh and that falls in line with uh floodplain management and mitigation. I've actually started talking with uh with a couple of different consulting. Firms and consultants that uh I'll be working on to develop some sort of proposal. To go forward as well, because we need some better management, floodplain management. And we need somebody that has the skills with which to uh go after some grant dollars that might be helpful to us in that area. As well, so we're thinking along the same lines.
Yeah, and and I think we agreed at the last uh commissioner meeting that you and I were gonna get together, and it was supposed to be today. But I had a personal situation that precluded us from meeting today, so we'll we'll make that happen as part of one of the follow-ups today's meeting.
Yeah.
And I think I'm done.
Okay, there it so those are two bit two big important pieces that I think we all agree on. Stormwater and sewer that we need to pay some attention to. Uh the other thing that that uh came up in in Chris's. Uh presentation on this year's budget uh. Is the is the building uh department. Uh and I know we're we're. We're taking in more money than we're than we're spending, but we've increased hours and everything else. What's your thoughts, Cinder?
Well, I think I sent something out to everyone to take a look before the meeting. Um because I I feel with our building department, we're pretty much at a critical juncture right now for making some. Strategic decisions as to how we want to move forward. Um I think we need to look at what's in the best interest for our townspeople. Um and what is our vision for our building department? And I'd like a little, I guess this is where I want some input from you all. I basically identified three scenarios. Um I think before I get into that, let me kind of share with you some financials that I've done, um and I would really. Very much appreciate the input if the FAC were assisting me in budgeting. But thus far, um from what I what I am able to extrapolate. I think our annual expenses for the building department will be about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars this year. That's. Going along with what we're doing and the hours that we've increased for our building official and our um. Our our permit tech. And our income on a conservative side, I think is gonna be about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand of annual income. Um and that's, you know, I've been in the department a month, I've looked at the figures, you know, I'm just kind of coming up with the best that I can come up with here. I anticipate for for year twenty-one, twenty-two to have expenses of about a hundred eighty thousand. That is if we track um with the building official, the hours they are now and our um permit tech. Um and and some other, we have like a potential ten thousand dollar annual investment, which I'll speak about. And then I think also if things track the same and in um two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we'll have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of income. So that would be like a washout, which is kind of a good thing to have. Um so in looking at the what's in the best interest for our town, based on. You know, our expenses and our activity right now. I have like three scenarios for us to consider. One is to maintain our status quo, which is outsourcing a part-time building official for twenty-four hours a week. I'm having our permit tech. Um but it also includes replacing our information system, which I believe is gonna cost about forty thousand dollars. For an upfront expense and then a ten thousand dollar maintenance, annual maintenance fee. Now, that's gonna be ten thousand dollars in addition to what we're normally spending. We've been previously spending because our current information system is not supported. Um it's, I guess it's um. Language is is out of date, um and if it crashes. And we can't use it any longer, we don't have any way to manage our information that's coming in with regard to the building department and permits. So scen- scenario one is kind of keeping things status quo. With what we are exactly right now. Uh uh number two would be for the same cost as what we're doing with with one. Would be to have a full-time building official. Uh and in-house. And then um our our other support, and we still would have to replace the information system, which we would be the forty thousand dollar outlay. And I'm not sure how the FAC does that when we make a purchase, whether it's um. I don't know, to over time we pay it off, or if we just pay it as a one-time, you know, expense. Um and then we have ten thousand dollars a year after that if we buy this information system. And the third scenario is that we completely outsource our building department. Um there's one company now, there's only one company out there that will take our building department completely outsourced, meaning move it out of our building department. Um and then we don't need to buy a new information system, we won't need one. Uh and if we do that scenario, we would give up all of our expenses and all of our income. So those are the three scenarios um for a building department. And so option one and two would require a forty thousand dollar investment. And ten thousand dollars a year additional. In our building department. And option number three would require no investment. And we would no longer have the building department under our watch. Um I guess the significance here is. We really need to determine, do we want to outsource or keep it in-house in either scenario one or two, because this forty thousand dollar. Um expenditure is absolutely imperative. Um in a pretty in pretty quick order, so that's why I'm kind of bringing this forward. We didn't, we really have to make these strategic decisions. Um. If we keep option one and two, which would be, I you know, a part-time building official from an outsourced company. Or building to our own full-time building official. Uh that would, we would experience the risk and the reward of that. Uh if we have the out the person as an outsourced person, if our volumes decrease. We can reduce the hours of that person. Um so that reduces sort of our risk in a way, you know, are we? If we budget next year for the same volumes that we have this year, and we don't experience that, we've set up. By putting our own building official in, we now have a building official, which we have not enough work for. So there's a little bit more risk. Um if we do bring on our own building official, the interesting point here is. We're getting three days a week now for the same price we could get someone five days a week, so that's the. Important thing is the risk worth the reward? And that would be in what is our vision for the town, you know, what kinds of services, how good do we want to be? Um and I know we can have an excellent building department in any one of these scenarios, so we just need to, you know, pick which one we want. Um if we con- contract out, I think I mentioned we would not get any revenues and also we would not have any expenses.
So that we we, Cinder, actually, we would still collect LDU and our. Transport station, so we still would have money coming in from for that, from that.
In that amount, yes, for those, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But not the permit fees or anything like that?
No, but, you know, we do collect.
Mm-hmm, the L D, yeah, that that's correct, Mary Beth. There would be some income. Uh but those. We're packing away because we need it for future use.
Right.
For for future land use and development. Um so currently, we have this extremely high work volume. In addition to having a high work volume this year, our permits are more complex. So they require plan, many of them require plan reviews, and many of them require more inspections than what we were used to. Um and not only more permits, but more inspections within the permits, so we've seen great increases. No one, absolutely no one could have predicted this was gonna happen. And so when we look at what is what is the future hold, again, no one can totally predict that. Um every beach town is experiencing this difficulty. So what's happened is we're overwhelmed, we've been overwhelmed, and we've been trying to add people and time just to kind of help us out with this. But this was just an overwhelming issue that has surfaced in our town, but. At least all other towns are experiencing the same thing, so I I feel we we're giving. You know, it it's just tougher for us to to meet the demands of our town. Um so I I guess I just want to have some discussion with you all, like, what are your thoughts? Um what is your vision for the town with regard to the building department? Does having a building department in-house, does that equate to maybe a more small-town feel that we're taking care of people one-on-one? Um or or does it not? You know, I I really want some help and some direction here, and primarily because this forty thousand dollar investment. Is going to be imperative, so open for discussion.
I, if we. Does the, okay, a couple of things. First of all, isn't there another, it says replace? Let's see, uh part-time outsourced building official and replace information system. What if we um outsource for more of a full-time person? Plus replace the information system or not?
Well, there is one company that I'm investigating right now that is gonna give us, and we can do that with with the current company, but at. We're paying for three days a week. What we could, we could have a full-time official for, so a five-day-a-week person.
Oh, I see.
So.
I misunderstood, okay.
It's sort of like a a. A a decision as to whether, you know, we want to have an in-house person with more hours or still outsource with fewer for the same dollars. Now, if we bring in tons more revenue. Um yeah, we could probably afford to have a a full-time outsourced person, but it's, you know, if you need a full-time person. I I don't know. If you want to outsource a full-time person, unless there's certain benefits that we can't provide, and a a company. Does provide some benefits. I mean, there are some benefits, resources that you have. We've really never tapped into those, but there are resources that a large company can offer. You know, by having some outsourcing. But anyway, that's, so where are you at? What do you think?
You know, way back when, we used to have full-time. But we actually ended up splitting him part-time with Indian Shores.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, no beach community has really a building department at all, so is there a way to maybe. Approach some other small towns? And ask if they would be interested in that kind of arrangement again? I don't know.
I would, I I absolutely, I mean, everything is out on the table. I can tell you that based on our volumes and the amount of work that our building official has, we could support a full-time building official at this time.
Well, I believe at this time, but I don't know that how long we're gonna be able to sustain that kind of.
As long as, as long as our um. As long as the workload is as it is, it easily will sustain.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I mean, there's just no telling. This is just obviously unprecedented, yeah, exactly.
There's there's never a way.
That's the part that scares me is just the unknown.
There is a risk and reward, and we did, you know, when we had the COVID. Um situation where everything went down the tubes, we did lay off.
Yep.
Um you know, our inspectors, so. Those are the things, there are uncertainties that the town would have to face. Definitely hiring a person ourselves. At full-time and and really make taking this building department on in our own. Um there are more risks involved, but there's also no decision is ever. The end-all. You can always make adjustments to decisions. Um and let's say we don't need a full-time building official after, so we can then see if there are other towns that could use. Support with a building official. Um and in fact, we said that before, so I think that's a possibility, Mary Beth. I think that would be a great idea. I honestly think right now with the volumes that we have, if it continues. Um it would support a full them. I I did sort of like a a. A workload kind of analysis, and there are some things that we're not doing that we could do. If we had an additional hours in in the building officials, so. It just depends on on what our direction is, so I, you know.
So so, Cinder.
Yeah.
Cinder, I understand that 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 right now, I think we all understand right now that the building department's struggling to keep up with the. With the with the workload. Um so first of all, this new software system that that you've said. That we need to purchase if we if we stay in option A or option option B. Uh if we purchase that, will will that help us in managing?
In efficiencies?
Yes.
Direct efficiencies, um.
Gotcha.
It it very possibly, but I think what is going to. It it very possibly, but I think what it's going to do, it's going to allow us to have a, a more sophisticated department. Where we're shooting out. Information and letters and and gathering data and being more communicative more easily. Right now, we do some manual things. So yes, there'll be a time-saving, but I think we'll also be doing more. So I can't, I can't, I can't quantify that, but that's a good, that's a very good question. And I am having a, I'm having a discussion. With the, this one company, just to kind of get some more details on it. Sherry's been working with it. Do you see Sherry? Um, a reduction in hours or time with the new system? Or is it just going to give us additional opportunities to serve the community?
Both. Unfortunately, with any new system, you know, there's adjustment periods and there's.
That's.
Time spent, you know, making the system work for us.
This is big.
So. You know. That's a concern, like, are we going to have the time to get the system set up to work the way we want it to?
That's, that was my, one of my kind of big concerns about implementing the system.
In the middle of all this.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it just, it it doesn't come at a good time, but eh, nothing ever comes at a good time.
Yeah, but our system is very, very, very broken.
So, so, so the, to me, it sounds like the the question is, is. Are we gonna totally outsource, source our building department, give it to somebody else? So, or are we gonna use, are we gonna go with possibly A or B? And A or B to me is something that I think. That we might even be able to pers, if if we decided that 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 was. A better choice than than. Than losing control of the, all the, the billing activity in in, in the town. We we could in fact. Outsource. Full-time. Uh, not outsourced full-time, yeah, outsourced full-time, up the hours of a, of a contracted. Building official to full-time or up to a point that that we can manage it. And at the same time. Advertise for a, a building official because I don't think. I I think that with with what's going on and everything I read. You will, you will have a hard time coming up with qualified candidates.
I, I agree. I agree, and you'd make a, one of the things that is so unique in our situation right here is that. We are not under pressure because we have, you know, with our outsourcing right now, that can continue for a whole year, you know? So, you know, we could look for someone. And keep, you know, just take a look and see what, what the possibilities are because we're under no pressure to make that change. Where I feel. Where I feel the pressure is that. The thought of. Getting someone for full-time five days versus three days, you know, that's, that's very big. That's, there's a lot of services, a lot better provision of services that we could. Could manage with a full-time person. What if we don't need the full-time person? And I guess that we could just, let me tell you, I know we would have other towns that would probably pick up. But anyway.
Okay, my concern is. Whether we outsource. Some of it or none of it or all of it. Is that? And this could happen either way. I had a. Uh, client who had some work done on her property in another beach town. That completely outsources their building department. And the inspector came in and she had had work done on both bathrooms and the kitchen. The guy comes in. To the first bathroom, opens up the cabinets. Shuts them and says, looks good to me, signs off on the whole thing and leaves. I mean, it has to be. How do we know? We're getting what we we are supposed to get, whether it's outsourced or in-house.
Yeah.
It has to be. It's difficult. I mean, this is difficult.
It's not easy and it takes. It takes management of the department.
Exactly. And I, software isn't the solution for everything, but I feel like. Um, having our own system would help us to keep a better, we'd at least be able to look. You know, open the kimono and take a look at what's going on. If we, if we had the software, I just want to make sure, because either way, you can go wrong either way if it's not.
Yeah, yeah. It's just that forty, you know, to make a forty thousand dollar investment, if we, if we have the intention or the need. Or it's best for our town to ferret out our whole department.
One question, does the, does the outsourcing company, does SafeBill? Do we have access to their computer software? Can we see what they're doing or can they see ours or?
Now, I I would imagine it would be public records, so certainly, I, we, you know, we could still look at what they're doing. Is that what you mean, Jenny, like?
Yeah, why?
They take our department. It was, it's public record what's happening. We would probably set up a reporting system where we get certain data and statistics and stuff, but we also have access to all their records.
Okay, but we don't have, we can't log on and see what's going on.
That is, that is one of the options. We can buy their software. There's a software that they. That's one of the information systems that we could get for the building department as, I mean, we have, I think, how many, Sherry, a couple at least, two, three?
Okay.
Of those different.
Yeah, that we've looked at.
Yeah. So that is, that that is one of the contenders that we could go with.
So let me.
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't get my question answered. So SafeBill, which is, SafeBill, which is the company we use now. We do not have access to their software, but they're, but that's only because we haven't checked that option.
Well, we don't, we don't want, we only contract for their building official. Okay, so they don't do anything, they don't do anything, we actually do everything and then they're, they provide the building official. So, however, they have a information system that they were willing to sell to us. But that really kind of didn't hear back from them, you know, we. Really, we have only one active system right now, but we did, there might be another one to look at that I've just found out about.
That answered my, that answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, so Cindy, uh, in option two. Uh, it says replace the part-time outsourced building official with a full-time in-house. But then it says if necessary, contract for a floodplain manager. I thought that Neil today is our floodplain manager. So how does that differ from this option? Is this mutually exclusive here or?
There, there may be. Um, we, we have, and and Mike can really speak professionally towards this, but. It may be in our, on our search for a building official, the building official doesn't, that's a component of a, that a building official has, which is floodplain management. It's not common for building officials to have floodplain management. Um, to be qualified or certified. It is. Very rare and so we, there are two building officials in our geography that have that ability right now. So if we.
But they're, they're working for other towns, you say?
One of them's working for us.
They both work, they both work for SafeBill.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's, um, but actually there, and and some towns that have, I don't know, maybe some towns that have their own. Building officials also, they're a floodplain management certified.
Do we have, do we have a non-compete or some kind of? So we couldn't hire Neil if we wanted to then?
Correct.
What's the, uh, what's the time limit on that?
One year.
One year from the time we were notify them that we want them?
One from the time he he ceases his employment.
Right, right.
And are employed with them. It's the, are employed with them.
Yeah, because I I I like the idea of, of, anytime we can invest in information systems and have the latest and greatest. I would agree with you and, you know, I know you've been in this job a short period of time, but you also were working in that department before you became a commissioner. So if there's anybody. That knows the intricacies about the building office, it's in in that group, it's you. Um, but I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to wrestle with. Bringing somebo, something, somebody in-house, I guess. Would would SafeBill be an option to go full-time too? Or do we not happy with SafeBill?
No, that, um, it's, it's a financial thing. Um, we'd have to pay, we. Right now, for three days, we're paying what an equivalent of a full-time building official would be if it was on.
What I'm saying to you, in option three, is SafeBill one of the companies?
They are the only one. And yes, they are the.
They are the only one.
Yes, now the. You know, the positive of that is their headquarters, if they took on our whole department, their headquarters is just going to be down the street at the old, um, Waukobia. So actually. They're still in town, although they're out of town, but it's.
But yeah, but that was my next thing I was going to ask too, is I was a little confused. So if we go total outsource. There's nobody on-site in 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 our, in our town hall.
Correct. We don't, people call us, they get directed to SafeBill. We don't answer questions, we don't. We don't really do anything. We have no act, action with regard. Not uncommon, you know, a lot of beach towns have done this. We're, we're one of the few towns that still maintain. And I, and I actually had a request out, I just don't have all the information, so I can't give you the data today, how many towns are outsourced. How many towns still do their own? The smaller the town, the more likely the outsourcing because of all the complexities. And rules and regulations that we have.
Yeah, and and that's, yeah, that was my next question was, again, you were mentioning too about, we have multiple systems. What is the conversion cost to get all our data onto the new system?
Yeah, that's, um, one, and again, I am, when I tell you forty thousand dollars, that's the high side of a conversion process. And then there's a ten thousand dollar maintenance fee for a new system. And that's, again, on the high side.
Quite honestly, forty thousand, let me tell you something, if we could. Yeah, yeah, that's right, forty grand, if you told me forty, forty, uh, four hundred thousand or. Or or four million dollars, then I'd have.
Yeah, yeah. It it's a, it's an outlay. And the other thing is that I haven't accounted for, we might have to. Add labor hours internally for the conversion process.
We do, we do. I talked to Adrian about that.
I'm, I'm talking to the company, uh, tomorrow to, because when I spoke to her, I I reviewed the contract that they had, they had submitted and. I told her it wasn't doable for us. We, they, we had to have a full-time person so many weeks. And I said. You know, we can't use your system if this is really what you're looking for because we don't have the capability. And she said, that's a mistake. They're withdrawing all that. So I don't know what I'm going to be meeting with, but rest assured, it's going to take. Data entry time and.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, no, I've been, I've been on those in my prior life and more. You know, different scale and all that. Um, so. Do you have any Yamazumi charts that you can share?
No, it's. I know, it's like, you want to make, what we really have to think about is what is best for our, our residents? What serves them the best?
Yep.
And that's, you know, I mean, I'm looking at it, I mean, I am all in. If you, if we decide we're gonna, whatever we're gonna do, I am all in. I will make it work. And I'll love every minute of it.
Say though, if we, if, you know, you spend an awful lot of time. In town, uh, hall, I mean, incredible amount of time, even before he became commissioner. And I'm just thinking, um, you know. Managing an outsourcing contract. Is not necessarily a cakewalk either. So, um, you're right, each one is, I I say option one is probably, status quo is not, I don't think is even an option. I mean, I'm sorry, but unless the other commissioners feel there might be some merit to that.
It is, it's our safety net.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so one of the challenges you have with outsourcing and one of the challenges we have with. When, when we have somebody different come in from, from SafeBill or any, anywhere else is. Having them understand our codes and our ordinances compared to what the state building codes, codes are. My, my concern with outsourcing is that if we outsource to a company. Whose business it is to do this for multiple locations. You could find yourself with different officials. You know, doing, uh, the work in the town today than versus tomorrow. So. You know, when you talk about servicing the community, you know, the perfect solution would be to have a, a very qualified. In-house, uh, official, that's, that's today. That's today because of the volume of work that we have. The problem that you have is what, what is it going to be? You know, a year from now, two years from now, do you need that? Do you need that full-time? Mike too, you, you know, we run the risk, you know, we could train somebody or have somebody with us. And they could decide they're going to take a job somewhere else because it's going to get more money too. So there's. Based on what it sounds like Cindy's head, heading up against when she's going through all the research. That's probably not necessarily out of the realm of possibilities that. Yeah, I've been there and done that too. I've trained other people. Uh, you know, and and made staffs better by the training they got from me.
What, what are the, the good things about that? I mean, I, I, is. Okay, let's say we bring somebody on, we, we work with them, train them. They leave, we at least have. The his, we, we at least know how we're going to train them and work with them and bring them on. So. Once you have a training program or plan that you, that you used that was successful. Um, as long as we have continuity, i- if someone leaves, you bring them in, you always, you, it's always a uphill battle at that point, but at least you. You have a, a training program, you know?
Well, go, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was it, that was.
So what if, what if we brought them in not as a salaried employee? Just as an hourly full-time employee and as the building boom. You know, kind of deflates, because it will, we can't sustain the level we are right now. We just cut their hours as need be. I mean, do you have to hire, we don't have a contract with them per se.
I don't know, I don't know who would take a job knowing that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you're not going to find too many people signing up for that.
I mean, I like that strategy, but I, you, I don't think you're going to get.
I think we're going to have a hard time anyway finding anybody. I've, I've looked out there and we've listened to other towns talk about. There's scarcity of building officials.
We could have them rake the beach an extra day a week.
Love you, Jenny.
Do some other work. I would, I, I would, I would vote. We're not voting, but, uh, my, my, uh, choice would be either to, uh. To increase to option A or option B and go ahead and buy the software. Make the software increase. I'm, I'm not really a fan for. Uh, giving it all away.
I, I have to agree. I have to agree. I, at one point in time. Several months ago, I would have, I was almost to the point where I would be like, let's just give it to somebody and then. Some stuff happened and I was like, yeah, let's keep our finger on the pulse. We need to do that.
What, what Cindy says that drives me over the top is when she asks the question. What do we think is best for our residents? And I, and I, and I think if you can give them some personal. Some personal care. We can do a better job than we're doing now with answering their questions and and improving. Then that's a positive.
Right, and I, I think maybe. If we hire somebody full-time. The, the market will change and it will go down, but maybe we can do exactly a shared building official like we've done. I mean, I know the people, I know the Reddingtons, I have a great relationship with them and I think I can probably get them on board. At some point down the road.
I love that idea. And I, I found, um. I do, I have a person that I believe we could, like, okay, so. The likelihood of getting a building official that comes ready-made with their floodplain management is.
Not gonna happen.
Probably not going to happen because I, I, SafeBill did some interviews a couple of weeks ago and not one of their interviewees. Had the floodplain management background. But that's something that we can hire and make a condition of employment. And then ensure that the person gets the training that they need to achieve that goal. And if they don't, at the timeframe that we. Identify, then. We let them go. But we can supplement the floodplain management. There's a, and I don't, I, I, you know, I don't know, there, there is a, I think we might be able to supplement it, uh, but we have to be able to. So we could even hire SafeBill just to. To provide us with floodplain management in an interim.
Yeah, there are other companies out there. I've been talking with some of these engineers. I don't, I don't. I don't think that's going to be an issue.
There are two companies out there that we could use as a resource, only two. And, um, one, I know we can get, we can, um, you know, get, get a floodplain management for what we need it for. And the second one, I'm not sure about. But, so we.
Yeah, I, so there's, so there's a, I, I've been doing a lot of work on that. And I, and I think that there's, there's a couple of things. Right now, our position description requires that that person be a floodplain, uh, floodplain manager. A certified floodplain manager. our position description requires that that person be a floodplain, uh, floodplain manager, a certified floodplain manager. Um, there are a lot of communities that do floodplain, uh, management work that do not have a certified floodplain manager, but their building official or someone is knowledgeable about floodplain management rules. I'm knowledgeable about floodplain management rules, just enough to get us in trouble, uh, at at this point, uh, perhaps. And and I am talking with companies right now that are in that business of floodplain management, also doing grant writing and have a whole plethora of of uh, skill sets that we might avail ourselves of, including that. So I don't see that as a, as a non-starter. But any building official that knows our our business will have to have some knowledge of what rules apply where floodplain management is concerned in order to get the job done.
And keep in mind, yeah, keep in mind, our ordinances reflect our floodplain management requirements.
Correct.
So if they, if they follow our ordinances, they're really following that. It's just having that oversight person. Uh, and keeping our ordinances current, you know, all, but, you know, all right, yeah.
Okay, are you done with the building department?
I'm done, I'm done. So I I, can I get a kind of a consensus? Do we kind of have a consensus to go ahead and 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 take the risk and get the information system? Get any.
We're not voting, but we're not voting.
I'm asking for a consensus. I'm just asking for a consensus.
And then she'll bring it to the next meeting, I guess, right?
I I feel like that, you know, it depends on what the, what the people in the town want. They should have. We haven't asked them, but sort of feels like the cart before the horse, you know, instead of figuring out what kind of a town do we want to be? Uh, um, figure out what we want to accomplish and then uh, figure out, you know, then how to pay for it with grants or this money or that money or sell this sewer or keep this sewer. Instead of figuring out first what we want to accomplish, it's like, well, this is how much money we have, what do we want to spend it on? Not, it's seemed detached from goals for the town. I'm just not used to doing it that way. Like, here's the budget, now, um, how are we gonna spend it? Not, and it's about that, it's not about, and it feels also very district-wide, you know, like there are different areas. I think it should be for the whole town. We don't, I I I don't have a sense of, I don't think any of us have a sense of, um, what do we want to accomplish as a town, who we want to be as a town first? I feel like that hasn't been addressed. This hasn't really been a strategic planning session. To me, a strategic planning session is first, you know, uh, getting feedback. I mean, I checked it out. I was really surprised to find Treasure Island. I knew Indian Rocks Beach had done this, but I was surprised to find that uh, Treasure Island had done that. I mean, other small towns, uh, even at the beach, have done this, where they surveyed the townspeople first. They ask questions like, what are your three favorite things about living in Reddington Shores? What are the three main things you think it should have? Uh, do you, you know, what have you had a a uh, need to use the building department, blah, 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 those sorts of things. And then from that, create a master plan and then look at what uh, dollars are needed to fuel that plan for the townspeople? And how, where does that money come from? It just goes backward.
I'm fine with that, Jenny. The problem that we have right now is when our information, if we do that, and let's say that takes a year and a half, and our information system goes down next week, what do we do? Because that's what we're.
No, I know that this is a, but but this, this like, it, to me, it's like, over and over, we end up in the situation where we end up in a situation where we have to, we're in a crisis, we have to make a decision. It seems like with the Parks Department has been Band-Aid, 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 some of which is because I think uh, previous commissioners wanted to hand out little jobs so as not to have to go through the um, uh, RFP process, but it's sort of without a plan. And then we end up in this emergency situation like we ended up with the dock this year. That was really, that could have been horrible, that and the pavilions. It was really a crisis and it happened right underneath our, that's very scary. What a huge liability. So, um, we're stuck with this situation. I would defer to you, Cindy, whatever, you know, the building department from a perspective that none of us do, I would defer to you what you think is the best route for that particular situation. I just want to make the point that this feels very much not like strategic planning. It feels like we got an in-service on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, and in terms of the building department, these three options, this is a strategic, this is, if you just look at the building department and not the town as a whole, this is a strategic time for the building, for the building department. But I I totally understand what you're saying, you know, um.
I'm not, I I can't, the the thing about, uh, completely outsourcing it to Safeville could be just as bad as uh, keeping it in-house. I I I don't, I just, I'm afraid of, you know, like this.
It, yeah, yeah.
And then we get, and then who's gonna get sued? Safeville or us?
Safeville.
Safeville, they take on the liability. They do, they take on the liability, but I checked into that.
Yeah, but the, but the ramifications of the the bad press, put it that way, the bad press is probably incurable.
When people get sued, when people get sued, everybody gets sued.
Well, I know, I'm not talking about the actual suit. I'm just talking about the reputation then, to your point earlier, about the commission. Now all of a sudden, the commission is got a black eye.
Well, I think we whichever, whichever direction, Cindy, I trust you, whatever direction you think that we should go, then that's where I want my vote to be, too.
Well, thanks. I I think we should get this software system. We're not, it's, we don't have an urgent um, issue with these decision one and two. It was just the, um, outsourcing. But here's the deal, we buy the system, we make our best decision now, we get the system, and we outsource it in a year or two, well, that's just life in a big city. What I think are, you know, um, right now, we don't have to hire a full-time person right now. We we are functioning, um, in the building department and and we're getting a grip on things now. You know, we're, we're, we are making progress. We're, I can actually see progress being made now. So we're, we're, you know, we're getting in better shape and managing the whole department.
One benefit, one benefit of of having the software is, I'm a little concerned with this other software that all of the, if it goes kaput, that all of our records will be kaput as well.
They're backed up, but what 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 happens is then we're manually doing everything and then you're kaput yourself, try to re, you know, I don't know. Yeah, I don't think we lose necessarily the data that we have, but we would lose our entire ability to.
Then I vote that.
Um, one thing, if if I could, just to uh, interject a bit of the historical financials. So I think that's one other aspect that that the commission may want to consider. Um, all the last two years have been relatively constant as it relates to revenues and expenses for the building department. Um, history has provided a a pretty clear picture of of what can go wrong uh, with having in-house uh, building officials when you have a fluctuation in revenue. And so, um, you know, I'm happy to participate in putting together a quick analysis that shows, I mean, if you simply take a look at back at, you know, twenty fifteen.
Yeah, I did. Um, we had, uh, I have those statistics. I went, I think I went to two thousand eighteen, which was.
Yeah, and I've, and I've got them up on my screen, so I'll kind of, yeah, I'll walk it right through them real quickly. So uh, for for the fiscal year ending twenty fifteen, which is really the first year that I started tracking in in full. So we had revenues in the building department, about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, and our expenses were a hundred and fifty-three. So so overall, you know, from a, from a excess of revenues over expenses, a fairly good year. Um, the following year, which is fiscal twenty sixteen, our revenues declined from two forty-three to one sixty-six or one sixty-seven. Our expenses, on the other hand, with in-house uh, building official and and building inspector went from one fifty-three to one eighty-seven. So suddenly, in fiscal year twenty sixteen, we were upside down. Our expenses were greater than our revenues. Um, and that trend continued the following year. So in twenty seventeen, fiscal year twenty seventeen, our expenses, which, you know, just a year before were one fifty-three, ballooned up to uh, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, while our revenue was a hundred and forty-five thousand. So, uh, we saw in a period of three years how, uh, you know, how you can get whipsawed by a change, a reduction in revenues and an increase in cost. And so what I would say is, is before, um, before you make uh, too many decisions, again, I would strongly encourage the commission to to uh, reflect back on the historical experience of town. Now granted, I think the town has learned a number of valuable lessons through that exercise. Um, but the numbers provide clear, uh, you know, clear proof that sometimes an in-house uh, position, especially that that doesn't maintain flexibility in costs, uh, can can result in in what is, you know, essentially a, you know, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollar loss. So an investment for software becomes, you know, insignificant when you're talking about a department. Uh, and and that isn't a period in which we saw a significant recession. So, um, you know, again.
Except, except the the conditions now are a little bit different, where the projections are that the beach communities are gonna continue to grow. Um, and building is gonna, and building and remodeling is gonna continue to be strong in the short term. But again, you know, is that two, two, three years down there? But I really like the idea of, um, if we do have a downturn and actually having the building official work elsewhere, then everybody else is gonna be having a downturn. So it's, it's really a risk.
Um, hey, this is Mary, can I say something?
Please, Mary. Oh, yeah. I'm very sure, are you?
I'm here. Um, the system that Cindy or Commissioner Kraut is referring to, it doesn't only do our building permit, it's a property management system. Every property in town ha, it has a property card, if you will, within this system. And it tracks, you know, um, like when it changes ownership, it tracks, uh, their garbage rates, their sewer rates, it's their permit history. Um, this system also, um, has our, uh, business tax receipts in there, our non-annual licenses, um. Uh, I think that's about it. There's so much information in this system. And I know Sheri has been working with, um, uh, companies or, you know, quite, uh, going out for quotes or whatever to replace this, and that's all gonna be replaced along with, uh, the building permit issue.
So it, could we track like code enforcement violations as well?
As as far as I know, Sheri.
Yes.
Was that in there?
That was in there. I'm pretty sure. There's a system for that. So it sounds to me like regardless of the decision about in-house, out-house, we need to get this software, bottom line.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
That's an easy one.
Okay, great. That's, that's, that was the biggest nut. That was my, you know, I I didn't want to buy the system and then two months from now, outsource. So this, you know, it has more benefits than just, um, our proper, our our building management.
Right, and the consensus of from, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Mary.
I was just gonna say, the consensus from the commission would be for them to proceed to look into this. And of course, it would be coming back to you all for a vote for the purchase.
Right, absolutely.
Cindy, the uh, the software uh, package or the system that we're talking about, um, this is, is this being utilized in any of the beach communities in the Big C or or, you know, somewhere? It it's not something that's kind of like, you know, just uh, came out of shrink wrap and and it has to be fully tested and is kind of got high octane, I guess.
I can't tell you where all this been. Sheri has been doing.
Sheri's been researching this, I know for a fact that she's done her due diligence.
Yeah, so Sheri.
Are there other towns using it, Sheri?
The system that, um, I've most recently looked at?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes, she did provide me, um, a list. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but we did have that.
Oh, it's not a new system, it's being utilized.
Okay, so, so it is being utilized, and it is, to Mike's point earlier, um, it's, it's being utilized in Pinellas County?
Uh, is it, Sheri? I don't.
No, I believe so.
Oh, you do?
It's a nation, nationwide as well.
But.
Well, more to Mike's, more to Mike's point, you know, we want something that kind of is close and near and dear to us, that we're not threading on new, uh, sometimes in putting these systems in, in the past, at least my experience has been, if you've got something unique that you need done, then you're not customizing a system, as opposed to buying something off the shelf that's gonna work from day one and solves pretty much ninety or ninety-five percent of what you need the system for, and it's just some minor tweaks here and there. That's all, I was just curious that is, if we feel comfortable about it, and it's great.
Yeah, I I, I mean, Sheri's researched it. I I really haven't researched it. That's, I'm gonna kind of get into it. Um, but we'll find out, we're gonna get a list of customers, we're gonna find out what their satisfaction level is, what their issues are, how they implement it. I mean, believe me.
Hey, Mary, I I got a question. So our sister towns, the Reddingtons and others that outsource, what do they do for their property management? Can you reach out to them if you don't know? Like, call Mary or me or?
I think.
I certainly, I certainly can. I do know that, um, they don't keep any of their records now that they outsource. But the uh, company they outsource with, which happens to be Safeville, I know, and the two Reddingtons, they keep all their information. So if there's record requests or anything, they have to go through them. So having our own, I just think is a big benefit for for the residents.
Okay.
But I will reach out.
Well, we did, Mary, we did. Remember, um, we sent email out asking for what systems were they using and what else? We had two things we asked them. And with that, they have, you know, what were their problems? What?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah, so we're just waiting for that, for that piece back.
Right, right, you're right.
Did that last week again.
Yeah.
You know, we're gathering, we're gathering our data. But I wanted to get a sense from the commission, though, before we proceed. I mean, there's, you know, that, the big thing was, are we gonna outsource at this point or are we gonna go with it? And I, and I think what we've said is, we're gonna go forward with this, because it has other benefits to the town as well and tracking things.
Right.
And then whatever happens is gonna happen, but at least we now upfront, um, you know, that we're taking a risk, but everything is a risk. I mean, nothing is guaranteed, so.
Okay, anything more about the billing department?
I'm done, sorry.
You're done?
That was great. It was necessary.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, so, so let me make, let me make a a comment here. Uh, Commissioner Blackburn, no, this, this hasn't been a quote strategic plan, blue sky kind of session. That's not what it was intended to be. It was really intended to have a strategic discussion about priorities for the, for the budget. And, uh, all of us should know, uh, should should have some feel from from residents in town uh, what's important to them. But we as as the commission also have certain responsibilities to make sure that we have critical infrastructure in place, that we are meeting some basic needs. I think the sewer system, the building department and and stormwater all all fall, uh, within that. Uh, so, you know, in in our primary responsibility is protecting life and property, and then that goes beyond, that goes beyond, um, uh, the fire department and the and the police department, whose whose budgets I think are are all in shape. So it was, this is really, really trying to focus on those things that are critically important that we develop plans for, that we can address within the the two thousand twenty-two budget. I I'd love to have a a good strategic planning, you know, uh, uh, retreat, but unfortunately, with, I don't know, I don't know if that's even e- even possible, given, uh, given sunshine laws in this, uh, in this state or how you how you do that, but, you know.
If it, if it happened in these other towns, the way it happened was publicly, it wasn't very rich.
Yeah.
It was publicly, so.
And 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 we need, and and I think this is a good meeting, we need to develop, we need, we we need to have a lot of this kind of, kind of discussion. There's no doubt about that. There there are a couple of things that I want to make sure that that I mention. Uh, in addition to what we've talked about here, is that, um, uh, budget, budgetarily, um, I I brought it up in in January, I believe. In January, I believe. Uh, and said then that I, that I should have brought it up during the whole budget development process. And that was our, uh. Our legal, uh, services. I think that, that we have a responsibility. At least once in a while to consider what our options are where that's concerned. And so. Uh, I want to renew that, that suggestion that we perhaps. Entertain proposals, not just from, uh, from. From our current, uh, uh, representative, but, uh, consider some others as, as well. So that's one of the things that. That, that I think is important for us to do moving forward. And that, in fact, is what, uh. What the commission said in January, let's wait until. After the, uh, after the election. So we're after the election and I'd like to do something. As we develop the, the two thousand. Uh, twenty-two, uh, budget. Um, there are a couple of things with emergency management that are, the, that are critical that I think you've all. Uh, heard about. We may do this, this year with making sure that we're prepared for hurricane season. And, and I'll talk more about that at the, at the, uh. At the May commission meetings, we'll have something there that we'll probably have to bring up for a vote. Uh, with, with regard to the, to the, uh, sirens system that we in, uh. In insurers, in insurers has. Um. Is, is there anything else that anyone wants to, to bring up? Particularly of strategic importance as we move. Toward building this two thousand twenty-two budget?
Yes, uh, as far as the parks department goes, I think I already mentioned this, that there've been just a lot of. Band-aids. On the parks over time. Um. Delma Spitzer is, has more recently been, like, there was a whole plan to it and it was implemented. Um. And, uh, the only real problem we have with Delma Spitzer right now is the fact that. There's the shade trees that should have matured. Maybe a little bit more by now, I'd be providing some shade. Uh, pretty much died. And, uh, but they waited to die until after the warranty with Wilcox Nursery. I know.
How do they know?
Okay, go, you know? It's time. Um. So, uh, we're gonna have to come up with some sort of a sunshade thing or something in Delma Spitzer Park. For the kids because it's pretty brutal. Um, there. So we'll have to budget for something with that. I don't know exactly how much or, or what. I've checked out a couple of things. Um. The other thing is that with Constitution and Del Bella Park, I feel like also with the landscaping and some other things. Um. I, I've done some things in both parks, but it was more like. You know, this was a Band-Aid that just, you just need to rip off the Band-Aid. This just needs to be done or people are gonna get hurt. And, uh, Constitution Park, we still have a couple of. Things that are. Uh, like the storm shutters, the roll-down shutters for the concession stand. Are just. Being held together by rust molecules. So there are some things like that that do need to be seen to. Within the year. Um. But I feel like we could also benefit by investing some money in. Uh. You know, a landscape architect to give us a, an overarching idea. Of, uh, what to do in both of those parks. Because, I mean, I ripped out a lot of the, uh, oh, there just seems like stuff was planted with no rhyme or reason. Over the course of fifty years, uh, in Constitution, Del Bella was a little more, you know, thoughtful, um, because of the. The grant and the way things were mapped out there, but it, it's getting really overgrown and shabby and our needs have changed. Um. So, but it would, I don't want to just go after it haphazardly. I'm no landscape architect. Um, I, I'd rather, you know, that the town invests in paying a landscape architect to come up with. Um, like this is what you should do. This is, this is what it would look like. So that we can all, uh, look at it. So the townspeople can even look at it, weigh in on it. You know, Plan A or Plan B. That's what I think that we should invest in. This year. Uh, as far, as far as, let me finish. The dog park. That's something that is in the, the concept stage. Um. You know, we have been getting input from. Residents all over. Not just the ones near the dog park. And, um, based on some of the, the things that have been raised, it's just, uh. Even if the majority of people want the dog park, that doesn't mean the people that don't want the dog park. Don't have a voice. And the things that they're concerned about, we may need to, if we go forward with that. We need to heed what they're saying and invest in things that will mitigate, uh, some of their concerns.
Here's, here's. He, here's what I like particularly about, about, uh, what you just commented on, uh, not, not the dog park per se. But all about, you know, parks and rec. Um, and, and the budget is a, is a whole, you know, traditionally, since I've been on the, on the commission, the way commissioners came about the, the budget was. Well, we had X number of dollars. In Parks and Rec or, or X number of dollars. In, in this or that. Uh, last year, so let's put the same thing in, uh, this year. And then sometime during the year, we decided what and if we wanted to spend money on. It wasn't a thoughtful. Plan going into the budget development about what our needs were, what our desires were. How that fits with all the other priorities and with the money that we've got, so we can figure out what needs to be done. So I for one really, really appreciate. The thought that you're giving, uh, to that and the thought that the rest of the commission. Is giving to areas that, that they have oversight for and. Uh. All the input that's coming from other commissioners.
Hey, and Jenny, maybe some monies need to be thrown at, maybe some of the redoing the parking lot at Constitution. It is. Those spaces are just overgrown, cracked. Just a trip hazard. You're muted.
Hideous.
Yeah. Yeah, I could read, but, you know, you're muted. But, um, also, the town parking lot can be reconfigured and redone to.
Yeah.
Accommodate more parking spots and every single parking spot equals dollars. So. Um, Bruce and before Bruce was gone, left, uh, we had talked about reconfiguring that parking lot, thinking of ways we could get more spots in there.
Is that mine? Do I get to do that?
It's you too. That's why we're just bringing that up. We're throwing money at Jenny. So, sorry, I just thought we need to address that because they really do.
Yeah.
Look, you know, bad and need attention.
So the other, uh, the other. If, if we're done discussing issues, there's a couple of things that, that I'd like consensus from the, from the commission on. And that is some, uh, projects going forward. For the, uh, FAC. So we've already, we've already talked about, uh, Chris and Kirby working with Commissioner Krajewski. Uh, in the county to, to kind of flesh out what that proposal might, uh, might look like. Um. I would suggest that we have them look at, uh, in, our insurance costs. See where we're at with all of that and perhaps give us some proposals that might. Might, might help us reduce that since they've, they've gone up so far. And then the last one is, and I just sent you all. Uh, the balance sheet that Chris sent, uh, sent me, so you'll have that. But I would think that it would be, uh, appropriate for the FAC. To look into whether it would make sense or if they have any recommendations with regard to. Uh, debt service and whether or not, as Chris said, that it, that it would make sense to pay that. Pay that down, uh, sooner. So those are FAC projects that I'd like to see. Uh, coming out of here if everybody agrees.
Agree?
Yeah, and, and I wouldn't mind the FAC or Chris kind of analyzing the building department costs and whatnot a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be very helpful, Chris. You're muted. You want to stay muted.
He's fine.
If we're, if we're done discussing amongst the commission, I have to open it up for, um.
I have one, one thing I wanted to look at because of the seawall problem that I found on one seventy-sixth. I think we should look at our easements, uh, and determine if we need to budget any repairs of seawalls. For next year and in, in the town-owned easements. That was it.
Okay. Uh, Mary, are you our attendee monitor or is that, oh, no, you won't be able to do that. Sheri?
Okay, if anyone would like to speak at this time, we have currently, aside from Mary, five attendees. Anyone has public comment, please raise your hand now.
They're still awake after three hours.
Maybe, maybe not. I, um. I have no hands raised.
Wow, okay. Oh.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Got one.
Okay, we've got Barry Taylor. Barry, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
This has been an amazing meeting. I don't think you guys are paid anywhere near enough. Uh, the number, I track things in the city hall and all, and, um. I was lost through budget and I was lost through a whole series of things in the storm drains. I've been watching storm drains with, with Bill and that, uh. I am, I am really in awe of how much work you guys put in and, and how dedicated you are. And, uh, how knowledgeable you are with the topics you're, you're, uh, you're tackling. Uh, just truly an amazing meeting. I just want to thank you.
Oh, thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
Anyone else? I have no one else. All right.
We should let Barry tell us how great we are for about another twenty minutes.
Oh, I'm kind of hungry. You can bring us some food. That's okay, too. All right, so under miscellaneous, our next regular meeting is Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. The next workshop meeting, which I hope is not three hours, is Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending and now go have some dinner.
Night.
Good night.
Bye.